Our study session, item 3.1 is our pathways to housing homelessness response strategy and expenditure plan. Translation services are available for this item. We will now hear from our interpreter.
Para las personas que necesitan interpretación en persona, tenemos auriculares disponibles. Hoy ofreceremos interpretación en persona y de manera virtual. Para aquellos que necesitan interpretación mediante Zoom, favor de hacer clic en el botón de interpretación y después elija el idioma de su preferencia. También estaremos ofreciendo interpretación durante los comentarios públicos en persona y virtuales. Las personas que necesiten interpretación consecutiva, por favor, hablen en bloques de tres oraciones, luego tomen una pausa para que nosotros interpretemos y así que de forma consecutiva podamos interpretar todas sus ideas. Gracias.
The purpose of this study session is to provide an overview of the draft Pathways to Housing Homelessness Response Strategy Implementation and Expenditure Plan and obtain the city council feedback on the vision statement, guiding principles, and goals and strategies that set forth a roadmap for addressing homelessness in Mountain View over the next seven to 10 years. Deputy City Manager Kimberly Thomas and Human Services Manager Parnit Dinsa will present the item. If you would like to speak on this item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight's presentation is a joint presentation of Human Services and the Housing Team. This presentation will be co-led by myself as noted and Parnit Dinsa. Housing Director Wayne Chen is also available for questions tonight. For close to a decade, the city has dedicated resources to programs and services for people experiencing or at risk of homelessness. In addition, the city has made important organizational changes to provide ongoing focus and resources to address homelessness through Human Services and the Housing Department. Shown on screen is a high-level summary of the city's homelessness response since 2016. This includes key accomplishments such as the development of the largest safe parking program in the county, opening an innovative interim housing community, Life Moves Mountain View, the endorsement of the county plan to end homelessness, that is the roadmap for ending homelessness within the region, and receiving the pro-housing designation by the governor. Based on the 2023 point in time count, nearly 10,000 people were experiencing homelessness in the county of Santa Clara. Of those, 562 were experiencing homelessness in Mountain View. Shown on screen is a breakdown of the number of households placed in permanent housing and the number of households that requested housing assistance. For the first time, for both the county and Mountain View, these numbers can fluctuate year to year. Contributing factors to this higher percentage for the city of Mountain View include the high portion of renters as well as the cost in living within Mountain View. Through the coordinated efforts of the Housing Department and Human Services Division, working hand in hand with our Police Department Community Outreach Officer Partners, the city has supported a variety of efforts and initiatives to help the most vulnerable residents in Mountain View. Shown on screen is a high-level summary of the city's focus areas aligned with the county plan to end homelessness, with outcomes based on the fiscal year 2324 data. It's important to note that for the Safe Parking Program as an example, that is the bulk of the city's financial contribution to homelessness. The city's approach to addressing homelessness has been multi-pronged, and the city does its part as a medium-sized city, considering various constraints. The city's role is to partner and gain leverage resources, work closely with the county and community-based organizations, with the understanding that the city can't solve homelessness on our own. It is regional. The city council has made this approach a priority with various annual strategic investments in key focus areas that were discussed on the previous slide. To sustain the city's commitment to addressing homelessness and to establish a roadmap for the future, the council fiscal year 2123 and then extended after work plan included a project to develop a strategy and expenditure plan, herein referred to as the plan. The project supports the council priorities of a community for all as well as intentional development and housing options. It also aligns with the 2331 housing element, the displacement response strategy, and the county's community plan to end homelessness. The plan shown on screen here, its cover, builds on lessons learned and charts the course for ongoing work. Its framework is centered on investing resources in continuing housing and services already in place and taking the opportunity to consider enhancements or future efforts for greater impact. The primary focus of the plan is to promote regional collaboration, leveraging existing resources, authority, and expertise with actions that continue and enhance a core set of services, i.e. the city key focus areas, and explores additional opportunities. There is also an expenditure plan that prioritizes the timing of each strategy and identifies the need for new partners or resources to implement any new or enhanced initiatives. The plan is intended to be a living document that will incorporate ongoing review, regular updates, and metrics aligned with the city's performance measures and contractual obligations as well as our commitment to the community plan to end homelessness. Now I'll turn it over to Human Services Manager Parnit Dinsa to cover the development of the major components of the plan.
Thank you. In March 2023, staff released a request for proposals, received multiple bids, and selected the most responsive organization to support the project. Shown on screen are the three phases of the plan's development. The methods of engagement and outreach strategies include an advisory committee, working sessions, small group interviews, and community forums. Shown on the right side of the screen are logos for the members of the advisory committee, many of which are a part of the community-based organization Coordinating Together Network. Additional members, for which there are not logos for, include individuals with lived experience of homelessness and members of the Asian American Pacific Islander community and senior community. The plan has a total of seven sections. Shown on screen are the key sections of the plan, of note, the executive summary, and the implementation and expenditure plan. Staff will now discuss the other sections of the plan. The county and city homelessness section of the plan provides comprehensive data and infographics, describing the demographics of people experiencing homelessness. Demographic highlights for the county and Mountain View are shown on screen and discussed in depth in the plan. The plan reflects the city's work over the past eight years, lessons learned, Mountain View's values, and partnerships, setting forth a roadmap for addressing homelessness for the next seven to 10 years. The plan includes a vision statement and set of principles which guide the goals, strategies, and actions. The vision statement reflects the city's ongoing commitment to respond to homelessness through local and regional collaboration, dignity and compassion, and equitable access to services. The four guiding principles are shown on screen. Now shown on screen are the five goals for the city to prioritize in the years ahead, requiring local and regional investments, commitments, and partnerships. Each goal has a set of corresponding strategies and actions, which will be summarized next. Goal one reflects the importance of regional collaboration and coordination to address the homelessness crisis, highlighting that the city cannot end regional homelessness on its own. Its strategies emphasize continuing existing partnerships, leveraging new ones, and sharing best practices. Actions for goal one range from continuing the city's existing efforts, such as the Coordinating Together monthly meeting, enhancing advocacy for regional programs, to exploring a multi-city model for street outreach supported with non-law enforcement staff. Goal two focuses on the needs of affordable and supportive housing. Its strategies emphasize the importance of making progress toward completing the city's existing affordable housing pipeline and diversifying housing options to serve a broader mix of residents. Actions for goal two range from continuing to partner with public and private agencies to secure new funding sources, enhancing the city's current affordable housing pipeline, to exploring the development of innovative housing for special needs and vulnerable populations. Goal three focuses on supporting homelessness prevention with strategies centered on continuing and expanding homelessness prevention efforts. Its actions range from continuing and enhancing the various areas within homelessness prevention, such as case management, housing retention resources, the permanent supportive housing program in partnership with the county, and exploring an emergency rental assistance program based on the successful broad assistance program provided during the pandemic. Goal four highlights the importance of unhoused and vulnerable residents having access to supportive services. Its strategies focus on providing resources and information through a variety of formats, tailoring services to the unique needs of vulnerable populations, and maintaining a sustainable base level of safe parking by utilizing the city's Shoreline Lot B as the base program site. Goal four actions range from continuing partnering with the county to share mental health services and resources, enhancing communications and outreach to non-English-speaking communities in coordination with the multicultural engagement program, to exploring a pilot program to fund local organizations to address needs that have been identified through the county's Mountain View provider network. Goal five recognizes that while unhoused residents bear the brunt of the homelessness crisis, its effects have impacts on the entire community. Its strategies focus on addressing health and safety concerns and providing resources and information. Its actions range from continuing cross-departmental and inter-agency coordination for addressing safety and health concerns, to enhancing the biannual Clean Streets program by providing garbage respecticles for a limited period of time, to exploring including Narcan as part of first aid available resources at city facilities. And now I'll turn it back to Deputy City Manager Thomas to discuss the implementation and expenditure plan.
Thank you. The strategy sets the course for collective action and to guide planning for further addressing homelessness in Mountain View over the next seven to 10 years. It builds on the lessons we've learned over the last seven or more years and the city focus areas that have value for our community, such as safe parking. There are 42 actions, and they are categorized by timeline, department, division, and cost. The majority are existing programs and services that staff recommends continuing, with key programs and metrics that will be incorporated into our contracts with the county and other service providers. The city will take a phased approach with timelines ranging from immediate to long term. Shown on screen are the existing programs: Safe Parking, Permanent Supportive Housing Program, Case Management, Outreach to Vulnerable Populations, and Basic Services. It's important to understand there is no dedicated funding source for the city's homelessness initiatives. These initiatives are currently funded through a variety of limited-period and one-time funding sources, which are requested on an annual basis as part of the budget process. Our partners also continue to contribute to these programs and services, as shown in column two. The implementation and expenditure plan recommends continuing funding for existing homeless initiatives and taking a phased approach to any enhancements or new programs. The implementation and expenditure plan does include a proposal for 140,000 in ongoing funding for enhanced initiatives, budget permitting, and staff is recommending two. That would be the permanent supportive housing program that is run by Human Services, which is separate from the housing program that the Housing Team runs in terms of units, and also outreach to vulnerable populations to ensure we are assessing our residents to get on the county queue for housing. The plan also recommends 325,000 in ongoing or one-time funding for new initiatives that may be piloted, including a multi-city street outreach initiative, exploring the emergency assistance program that was similar to what was done during the pandemic, making it as broad-based and as user-friendly for tenants, and piloting the mental health first aid This overview leads to staff's three questions for the council. Does the council agree with the recommended vision, guiding principles, goals, and strategies associated with the plan, or have other feedback? Does the council agree with the actions recommended for existing and enhanced initiatives? And does the council have additional considerations for staff to include in the final plan? As follow-up to this council meeting, staff will incorporate feedback from this study session and return to the council in the spring or early fall with the final pathways to housing plan, seeking council adoption. This concludes staff's brief presentation, and we would be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Since this is a study session, we'll actually start with public comment. So would any member of the public, joining us virtually or in person, like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk. We'll take in-person speakers first, if there are any. Each speaker will have three minutes.
You can fill it after if you'd like. No problem.
Good evening, Council. I'm Brian Leong, pastor at Lord's Grace Christian Church and the founder of Move Mountain View. I want to thank all of you, always, for the leadership you've provided in the area of homelessness here in our community. It is inspiring, and I think the very fact that you did this whole process, and I was glad to be a part of it, was such an amazing thing for me. But it did inspire a couple of different ideas I wanted to share with you that I didn't see reflected in the plan, and one of them is, maybe it's just one big idea with two really good possibilities from it. I thought it would be possible, building on a model that they use in Los Angeles, to build a one-stop resource center for the unhoused here in Mountain View. What they do in L.A. is they basically took an abandoned mall and they turned it into offices that are pretty much empty offices, but different organizations who provide services are able to have office hours during the week during that time. And the upshot of that plan is that they've been able to create something where unhoused citizens can come in and know that if they go to this one spot, they can get a majority of the resources they need. And that's something that we saw as one of the goals, was to increase the ability of getting services for the unhoused. And secondly, it creates a lot of collaboration. I so enjoyed just sitting in a room together with all the different people who care so much about the unhoused, but our time was always so limited, and the process was very strict, and so we didn't get as much time as we'd like. But I feel like if we just sat in a building together throughout the week and our staffs were working together, not only would we be able to trim some fat off of our budgets, because there are things that I think we double up on that we don't have to, and we'd be able to make ourselves all leaner organizations, but also I think we'd be able to innovate and we'd be able to do new things, to see that the people who need it the most would be empowered to get out of the situations they're in. And so that's my hope, just an idea I'm dropping. I don't know if it's possible, but I thought I'd take a swing while we have a chance. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other in-person public comment? Okay, I am not seeing any, and I am not seeing any virtual raised hands, so I will bring it back to the council for an opportunity to ask questions and then discuss and provide feedback on the following three questions. So do any council members have questions? Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a question, as I was reading through the report, an item, strategy 2.3. A, it was support development of innovative housing for special needs and vulnerable populations. Can you provide examples?
Yes, I'll actually ask our Housing Director Wayne Chen to respond to that question. It's an area in his purview.
Good evening, council members. I'm Wayne Chen, the Housing Director. Thanks for the question. So regarding innovative strategies, we're looking at a few different things. First is just funding, because there is a lack of funding, and we're trying to find new ways to develop housing. There are also related projects, such as what we might be doing through the Community Ownership Action Plan, through community land trusts, and identifying innovative housing options through that pathway as well. Because they are innovative, we're still in the exploratory process. The Community Ownership Action Plan, for example, is helping us identify potential different housing products that we might be exploring, potentially funded in different ways to address different population types. So those are examples of the types of innovative products that we're trying to explore to address various needs of vulnerable populations and special needs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shawater.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is just a repeat of, I want to share it with everybody, one of the ones that was in the council questions. How much funding would be needed to prevent homelessness that happens due to evictions in Mountain View on an annual basis? One, it's on page five of the questions, no, page six, it's 27. Anyway, I just, I wanted to talk about that a little more. I really do think, as we move forward, that concentrating on homelessness prevention is really important, and so, you know, helping people from get evicted, or if money wasn't needed to help them from get, to keep them from getting evicted, what kind of financial assistance do you think would be helpful?
Certainly from a staff perspective, thank you for that question, council member. Broad assistance, such as what we provided for the rental assistance program, that's powerful, as well as our city program that we recently completed for guaranteed basic income. Anything that alleviates the burdens on households to meet their monthly rent is key, and on the eviction protections and what our housing team provides as support for that, our Housing Director Wayne Chen may like to add to that answer.
There's not a one-size-fits-all solution or a silver bullet. We are looking at it through the three: peatlands, production, preservation, and also protection. So rental assistance could be one way to help stabilize folks, that's one way. We have taken a look at, for example, something longer term, like rental vouchers, that has a much greater cost, is an ongoing funding source that's needed, and there might be more administrative items, so those are sort of cash rental assistance. Then, of course, having our displacement response strategy be developed and implemented. There are various items under Program 3.2 that would support preventing homelessness by addressing the issues of displaced tenants, and then finally having enough affordable housing to allow folks to be able to afford their payments.
Okay, well, that's great. I'm glad to hear that there's a whole laundry list, because as you say, it's all individual. But I think it's really important that we get our arms around what sort of the total cost is from a regional perspective and also from a local perspective. So that's why I keep asking these questions, is because I think, you know, if we're going to go ask for the money, we need to know what the money is. Okay, so the other one, before it slips my mind, is, oh, I wanted to ask about the distinction between short and long term, or medium term. For instance, on this rental housing assistance, you put that down as a medium term, I believe? Why wouldn't that be long term?
Because we're looking to be able to pilot that and be able to show some metrics and some delivery on that. In addition, what we're looking at there, when we say medium and long term, we're looking at from a budgetary perspective as well, looking at it from a phased fashion.
So in other words, we understand that the chances were we'd have to have some sort of a program long term, but what we start with would be short term?
Correct, medium term.
Medium term.
And medium term is, in the strategy laid out, as increments of years, I think medium is, oh, sorry, it's four to seven, and so it means that the city at a staff level would begin to address that issue at approximately the fourth, seventh year.
So by that time, you probably have enough experience to come to some conclusions about the best way to move forward.
That's a piece of it, but also it's looking at the budget options to be able to phase that into the overarching.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McAllister.
Thanks. Couple of questions, that's about it. So you were talking about housing services in-house. Is there a cost advantage versus in-house versus subbing it out, or someone like CSA?
You mean like rental assistance, council member?
Well, you mentioned housing services that we do in-house. I don't exactly know exactly what those services are, but is it cost advantage to us, or to stay in-house, or to go out to a third party?
On some programs where we have an area of expertise, such as our Housing Department and our rental housing team, it can be very efficient to do it in-house. If it's certain specialty programs that we've operated over the years, like the rental assistance program or guaranteed basic income, where we specifically need a nonprofit partner, it can be very effective to liaison with a safety net provider like CSA.
When you said we do it in-house, was there a cost analysis, or you just felt it was?
No, there's not been a cost analysis of the Housing Department and the various services within. I know there's a cost allocation plan, but I don't know that we've done an in-depth analysis of each service they provide.
Okay, and the second question is, on the one-time funding, when you say one-time funding, is that it's, we usually give it each year, but it's not guaranteed to be?
That's correct, council member.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Do any other council members have any questions? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to our feedback on the questions that staff proposed in the staff report. And so I think, if possible, we can take all three questions at once, if council members are amenable to that. So the questions are, again, number one, does council agree with the recommended vision, guiding principles, goals, and strategies, or have other feedback? Question two, does council agree with the actions recommended for short and medium-term funding? And the last question, does council have additional considerations for staff to include in the final plan? I will start with Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor, and happy Lunar New Year. I want to start by expressing my appreciation to staff and the consultant, and also all of the stakeholders who participated in the preparation of this plan, which I think is very strong. It's a very good starting place. I have some suggestions for improvements. I'm eager to hear what my colleagues have to say, but I did want to start by acknowledging the significant amount of work put into the preparation of the document before us today. So I want to also thank the staff for their responses to the questions about Functional Zero and the benchmarks and metrics that we may want to use to help us understand what success looks like, or where we may need to consider additional modifications if we're not quite on track. So the level setting on Functional Zero especially is meaningful to me, since I think that is actually a a useful goal, or maybe not quite metric, but something to strive for that is quantifiable, even if it is difficult to achieve and may require a significant amount of funding that we may not have available at this time. But I think incorporating that understanding into the revised draft that will come to us later is useful. And I'm also interested in what other members of the council have to share about what types of metrics they may want to see incorporated. But that was the one that was most important to me. So for minor suggestions for changes, the first is moving away from rent relief, which has a particular connotation. I shared this in my briefing with staff, and thank you again for the time, I think a few weeks ago, to delve into this. Rent relief suggests, and historically has been provided directly to the rental property owner. And that introduces several complexities. One, you may have a rental property owner who is not easily accessible, or who may refuse to accept that funding. And I know we have a technical expert here, or several, Tom, I think you wrote about this, and I do want to take advantage of your knowledge, but during the pandemic, when we started to understand the limitations of rent relief, we shifted to a direct financial assistance model. Not necessarily GBI, right? There were one-time assistance programs, including the partnership we had with CSA. And that's the program that I would like to resurrect and then provide ongoing funding for. I think it helps struggling households who are at risk of homelessness, not simply because they're unable to pay a rent check, but they may have significant medical debt, or there may be some other financial catastrophe that is creating distress that is not easily resolved just with rent relief. So I'd love to continue to explore that particular model as staff continues your work on this. And then also, especially bring in CSA, since, in my opinion, I would welcome your feedback, Tom, especially, that was one of the most successful programs that came out of the pandemic era. And then also, I'm grateful to staff for elevating the allocation in the expenditure plan for Measure G for homelessness prevention. I think that's probably the best source of funding that we could consider for that program, but I'm also eager to hear suggestions from my colleagues. The second suggested change is related to, I think it's the final goal, which has a public safety nexus. And I do want to recognize the indispensable partnership we've had with MVPD. I think they're a key stakeholder, and they certainly have, our police chief and your staff have done a remarkable job, helping us understand and address concerns related to homelessness in Mountain View. And I want to continue that partnership, but also recognize that not every response needs to include an officer, that there might be more cost-effective ways or alternative response models that we could explore, when there are concerns related to homelessness or impacts of homelessness that don't have a very strong or clear public safety nexus, right? So if someone is not belligerent, or, you know, creating some type of public health hazard, it may be more appropriate to explore the trust model, or something along those lines. There are different ways of providing outreach and engagement that don't necessarily have to include MVPD from the get-go. So that's the other element I would love for staff to continue to work on, and then come back to council with recommendations to consider. And then the final change is related to, I think, mostly Goal Two, expand and preserve affordable and supportive housing options. I also want to commend staff for including interim or transitional solutions like safe parking. There is a commitment to building in a base level of safe parking support, which I support and welcome. But I do feel we can, especially if we are starting to think about Functional Zero as an element or a goal of this plan, are there ways we can create the kinds of infrastructure that Pastor Leong suggested, or that we have a representative from Life Moves, you know, another type of service model that helps get folks off the streets and gives them access to the services and the pathway to housing that we would like to see unhoused folks have. So there are good things in Goal Two, and I think there are some very specific elements, like additional, an additional 200 units of rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing. That's been something the council has been working on for many years now. So that's not new, but it's an affirmation of that objective. The, I think there's somewhere a commitment to one additional safe parking site, which I support. But I would love to be more aggressive in seeking and implementing interim solutions. Safe parking is an important interim solution, but I think there are other models and approaches that we ought to consider as well, recognizing that, again, there are resource constraints that make it difficult in practice to achieve these goals. But I think it's, if, you know, in my opinion, we ought to strive for Functional Zero, it is unlikely that we're going to get there without some additional support for interim and transitional solutions. And so hopefully, the revisions can provide council a little bit more guidance and an opportunity to explore that as an option. So those are my suggestions. I'm eager to hear what you all have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. So just to clarify, I put all, I took notes, and I feel like those all fall under question three. Did you want to answer question one and two?
I support everything else.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I just think it's important for staff and myself, we're going to take notes. So, and I think I heard maybe some straw pulls with some of your suggestions. So we'll go back to those as well. And as we're going forward, if council members want to clarify any additions that they'd like to straw pull the rest of the body on, please also let me know for my note-taking. Okay, councilmember Hicks.
So I also wanted to thank staff for what I thought was a very strong report summarizing, you know, what we're in the midst of doing and what we can do in the future, and one that council can build on. And also frankly, thank our various providers and our residents, because as you can see, unlike, I think, a lot of cities, there's no one here protesting the fact that we're doing this, which could be the case in some places. So, and I want to say, I'm really proud of what we've been doing over the past, I don't know exactly what timeframe to put on it, but five, 10 years. I would say, when I was a resident, I've been a resident for 25 years, I would not have always said that I was proud of what we're doing around this, around this issue. But I think that we've really, kind of, with the help of some of the people in, members sitting in the public now, and staff and council members, we've really done a lot of very ambitious things. We haven't solved the problem, but I think we've done a number of things that have been examples for surrounding cities, that have been bold and sometimes challenging pilots, because when you pilot something, you expect to have some problems. And we do sometimes. So I am now, although I wasn't in the past, I'm pretty proud of what we're doing around, on this issue now. My goal is kind of, I don't know if we'll get to Functional Zero, but, because there are a lot of challenges ahead, but my goal is to do our fair share and a little more, kind of like, I think, what I was taught in Girl Scouts. And so that, and thank you, Mayor, for saying, I'm always a little nervous when we have a new mayor, because the study sessions, we all say a lot of stuff, and then we don't check back and see who agrees with what, and what have we said, anyway. So I'm glad you're taking notes, and I will be supporting what councilmember Ramirez has said, but I hope you check back with us, because I don't know what everyone else is going to say. And I hope to support what they're saying, too. So, you know, that said, I think we're facing a lot of daunting challenges now. I mean, we faced daunting challenges in the past, mainly after the, what, '08 crash. Then there was the tech mushrooming of the tech industry and the escalation in housing prices, to the point that we have, I think, the highest rental prices in the Bay Area right now. Maybe someone else has superseded us. But, and I think our actions to address that have been, you know, have been good, but of course, fallen short. I think now what we're facing is the change in legislation and the encampment sweeps, where surrounding cities are maybe sweeping people in our city or other cities. And then with the new federal administration, there's a freeze on grants and loans, and who, I don't, my best guess is that's not going to go in a positive direction for us. And I hope I'm wrong. So with all of that, as a background, I think there are things we can still do to, you know, to do even better than we have been doing. So my first, so I agree, three questions, I like everything. And my additional comments are that when staff does the Shoreline Area Plan later this year, to explore a designation for some kind of affordable housing funding, that would, of course, be used just in that area, that community, but it's a tax increment district. And in my experience working in other places with those, they, when you're developing things, you always do infrastructure along with it, be they roads, plumbing, whatever. And affordable housing is some of the infrastructure that we always need when we develop things. So, and that's seen in the plan, but I've also worked in places where they've had a housing trust fund. We have a lot of not-permanent funding in this. I would like to see if we can explore in our permanent funding stream. The second is, when staff does the Shoreline Area Plan later this year, I want to have more than our current baseline of safe parking in, that we have, I mean, over the very long run, I would like to not need safe parking at all. But right now, living in sort of a good news, bad news thing, I think the majority of our homeless people are living in recreational vehicles. And that's better than on a park bench, but worse than in a house. And so I think we're losing some of those safe parking spaces. I would like to explore developing some more there, so that we can get most, if not all, of the people living in RVs there. And, because then it's more sanitary, it's not, you know, in somebody's neighborhood, and we can provide them with services and help them move on to a more permanent situation. And frankly, there may be some of them who are, you know, just doing urban camping, and maybe they can find a better camping spot. But most of them, you know, I think we can provide those services if we have, I don't want the number of spaces we provide to dwindle. So those are two additional things. I liked a lot the talk about partnering with neighboring cities. I think Palo Alto and Sunnyvale were mentioned, and that's great. And I think that homeless individuals are very different, with very different needs, you know, whether it's, whether you're there because of domestic violence and divorce, or because you're a senior with few job opportunities, or you're, you know, maybe aging out of foster care, or, those are people with very different needs. Or whether you have drug and alcohol problems, you know, those are all very different needs. So I think different cities may, some of those populations may, you know, Los Altos Hills, maybe they'd like to do something for women facing domestic violence. Los Altos, maybe they'd like to do inclusionary senior housing. I think if we talk to more and more cities, that there may be certain demographics that every city wants to work with. Pairing with that, I would like to lobby to get state legislation regarding city homeless response obligations into the next housing element, because I think that that gives all cities a little incentive to figure out which demographic they would most like to serve, and then serve that demographic. So I think those are, I will be supporting councilmember Ramirez's suggestions as well, and I look forward, well, I'll add one more. I would like an evaluation sometime, this is not my top priority, but an evaluation of service provision at interim housing spaces, because that's just, in terms of best practices and limits, it's just a really hard service to provide. And I, you know, it's hard to pay people enough, hard to find the right people, and I don't personally know what the best practices are. So if we work with people in the region, maybe somebody can do, help us out with that, with like, what are the best practices? How do you get a handle on that, to make sure you're doing it really well? So those are my additions. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. I have been agreeing with most of the comments, with the comments so far. So going down the questions for me, question number one, yes, I do mostly agree with the vision, guiding principles, goals, and strategies. I would like to kind of emphasize principle three, value dignity and compassion. These are our residents. Even if they don't have a home to call their own, they are our residents. And that's something to really, to emphasize there. But I would also, I'm trying to figure out if I could just throw into that principle, I guess as part of regional collaboration, but like, our residents, our own residents have a part to play in addressing homelessness. It is their support. And as, I believe, I don't remember if it was councilmember Shawalter or councilmember Hicks that mentioned it, that it's something that we're very grateful for. We have had residents that have supported these projects that address this homelessness crisis in a way that is very different from what we have seen in some other cities. And I think that is something that our residents should be very proud of, and I'm very proud of, as a resident of the city myself. And our staff should also be very proud of having that kind of support. We learned, well, I guess, in the last few weeks, had probably been very difficult and chaotic in many respects for many people doing, especially this work. And we rely on, I think, because of how well-run our city is, and how on top of things our staff and our fellow council members are in addressing issues by our residents, and taking on these hard challenges, we want to generally just be, it's all going to be okay. And I worry sometimes that it's not all going to be okay, but we can move toward, we are not helpless in this. We have a part to play in this, and we are going to move forward in this. So that's how I've been kind of looking at our vision, guiding principles. It's very strange, because a lot of this was drafted over a long period of time, and through different administrations. And so that's something for us to kind of think through. As for number two, does council agree with the actions recommended for existing and enhanced initiatives? I do agree with the actions recommended as a base, because I'm also, like my colleagues before, I'm going to just add a few tweaks. And so that will lead me to three, which is where we get to our, most of our things that will be put in a straw poll. So I agree with exploring, in lieu of rent relief, direct financial assistance, which can be used for rent relief. So that's something made very clear. We're just kind of expanding what that can be used for. We did both during the pandemic. We did rent relief and direct financial assistance, so we do have history with both programs. We did rent relief and direct financial assistance, so we do have history with, with both programs. My worry with direct fin, with rent relief is, when we did rent relief, there was also a moratorium in place. There's the similar incentive other than getting the money, which we're not quite sure when that money gets there, because government moves slowly but deliberately. And so we don't, we want to make sure that we get that money essentially to the hands that needs it faster. So, and what we have also seen is that generally the closer you kind of get to the risk of homelessness, the more interesting scenario, housing scenarios you are in. And so I'd rather have that kind of expanded model. That is, that's why I agree with the direct financial assistance. There was some talk, I, I know that there was some talk on the navigation center, I, I actually, I, I do like that idea, but what we could do is bolster our existing housing help center. This was something also created during the pandemic. This was, I remember it a lot, because it was a partnership between the, like, the city council and the rental housing committee, when it was just one place you can go if you have questions, like, I got an eviction notice, what do I do? And so there's, you could get your financial assistance there, you could get legal help there. And what was interesting is that there was money set aside for the legal assistance, but that wasn't needed at the time. I don't know if that's changed, because I, my understanding was that CLESA and the Stanford Law Clinic gave those services pro bono to the clinic. And what was actually needed was the translation services. And so that's something I think, particularly in that one-stop shop. And not only that, we also leverage that to create a place where people can apply for affordable housing. And so I think that, that's kind of like an additional bullet point. I think it's something that we kind of already do, but if we bolster the support there, I think that's something that would be very powerful in addressing this crisis. And then under 5.1. B, it says, share information about resources available to address health and safety concerns. I, I think this was actually targeted toward people who need the assistance, but I'm actually think that this is something that could be shared with our community as a whole. When I talk about everyone can take steps to addressing this housing crisis. I was very fortunate last week to take part in the point in time count. And I was very lucky that I got assigned to a group that had someone from CSA in our group to tell us where to go. And this, when people, when people see those in need, they, there is a natural instinct, I think, in, in humans to want to help. And they may not, when, when they say they want to help, the first instinct is like, call the police on them. It's not really, that's not the first instinct. You call the police when something's wrong, usually. But like, if some, we, we've gotten emails like this before, where someone was like, someone was sleeping in a bus shelter, what's available for them? We should have some answer for that, that they can call someplace, like, we know there's an unhoused person here. And at least that, the person they contact could either, no, now they know that there's an unhoused person in this location, they can address the situation. If they need help from the police, they can go themselves, or, or they can reach out to the police themselves. But it, it gives that barrier for, that a resident would have if they see someone that would need help and don't really know how to help them. They could just give a call someplace, and then we know that someone's going to be aware of it, which was very helpful. This is why I mentioned the point in time account, is because the person I was assigned with, he knew where all the people were and knew the people. And that was, that was very helpful. And I think as residents, that might be helpful for them as additional eyes and helping hands. So I, I don't know exactly how that would look like, whether it's like a call line or anything like that, but something to empower our residents to help with this crisis. And that's, oh, and I also agree with finding some sort of metrics. I know there was talk about functional zero. I view it more like a North Star. You don't, we aren't planning to go to the North Pole, but as long as we know where it is and we can direct our, our directional rudder toward it, we can make our way through this crisis.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Showalter.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, well, I am, I've been really interested and impressed by what everybody has said so far. So in general, I, I don't have, I'm not going to repeat everything. I would like to repeat, however, my thanks to the staff for working on this, my thanks to all of the nonprofits that are involved in helping our, our most vulnerable residents and who have joined together to make the collaborating together network. I think that that, you know, building on that synergy is very powerful. And with that, I would really like to see it evolve into some sort of a navigation center. And I'm not sure we, we have the information to say what exactly that should be, but I think we should empower that group to, to develop it. And so, so that's just sort of a general thing. Then another general thing is that I really think, I, I like the emphasis on prevention. When you look at the number that, you know, for every one person who we house, 2.4 become homeless. I mean, we just have to get that number down. We got to get it below one eventually to get to functional zero. I don't know if I'll live to see it. But anyway, I, I really do think that's what we, we have to work on. The Fondo model that we saw during, you know, during COVID was just so inspiring and so effective. So I think that that was really direct assistance. And, and I was talking about eviction control. I, I really don't care whether the reason they become homeless is because they can't pay their rent, or they can't pay our medical bill, or, or whatever. It's just that, you know, from a social point of view, it's not in anybody's interest for anybody else to become homeless. So we, we, you know, we want to use the lessons we've learned to, to, to stop that. Another thing that hasn't been mentioned, I don't think thus far, is just exactly where GBI fits into this. I don't think we have an answer tonight. I don't have an answer, but I, I hope that as we move forward and we discuss the homeless strategy, the final, there will be a little something about that and how it fits in included. I also am a real proponent of safe parking. It's one of the, to me, safe parking is like the Mountain View program. We, we, you know, we hear a lot that we have the biggest program in the county. Well, that's great, but, but we still have people who could be in safe parking that are living in RVs in our streets. And they would, and it would, most of them would probably be much happier in safe parking, and certainly many, most of, many of the neighborhoods would be more happy if they were there. So I think that the push to have a base of the, the system that we currently have is, is valid, but I would also like to see it increase if that's possible. And then, so question one is basically, I agree, but I just would like to make sure that we have a lot of emphasis on prevention. Then, then for number two, I agree with the actions recommended for short and medium funding. As I talked about, you know, a little earlier with the question, I have some questions about what, what short, long, or medium might mean, but what I care about is let's make sure we keep doing what we're doing and get started on the new stuff. And then question three, does council have additional considerations for staff to include in the final plan? Again, the navigation center. And the other thing is, I really think that as part of our being regional advocates, we need to identify what we're going to advocate for. So I, I'm really very interested in learning better how to advocate for, with other communities on this and for legislation. I've been trying to do it since, I mean, in 2016, I felt like what got accomplished as the year I was mayor was, we really got this homeless assistance program off the ground. Former Mayor McAllister had gotten safe parking started, the discussions about safe parking started. And I'm really proud of that. But, but I do think that we, I still don't have down what exactly are the talking points that work. So I think we need help with how do we advocate, what is effective? And we need talking points, and we also need, you know, we need requests for legislation that we should be asking for. So, thank you very, oh, I also want to support the idea of including a section of, advocating for including a section on homelessness in the housing element. I think that's a great idea. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Clark.
Just very quickly, I think most everything has already been said, but I, I do agree. I'm fine with, one, the overall recommended vision, guiding principles and goals, and also, number two, the, the recommended actions. I think others have chimed in with some of their additional considerations. I don't have anything beyond some of the ones that have already been offered, but, so I'll just wait to hear what, what staff thinks in terms of what they think they can just incorporate based on comments and what actually requires straw votes and, and chime in then.
Great, thank you. Councilmember McAllister.
Now for a different perspective.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Been here since 2002, 12, I've seen all these actions items, I support them. There's nothing really new that I've seen that we've done over, or tried to do over the last 10, 12 years, other than the, the safe parking. I appreciate that the staff was able to, you know, put them down a little more concise, but there is a, I just have a quick, my overview on the whole thing is, we haven't accomplished much in 12 years. We still have homelessness, it's increased, we haven't found the issue, we found a bunch of ways to sort of kick it down the road, but we haven't solved it or reduced it. My solution as a businessperson, let's solve the problem, and I'm going to bring up my buy apartments, buy housing. That way we can take care of the drug addict, or the foster care, the domestic violence, rapid rehousing. Then we have control of the housing that we can put people in immediately. We can partner up with somebody that does housing, and therefore that will manage it for us, and then you have a direct impact on reducing homelessness. But the things that everybody's been talking about, I saw 10 years ago, and nothing's changed. Maybe the word enhance, maybe go do this, highlight this. We still are missing the point that we got to work with the county. Yes, we have local cities that we got to do with, but the county is making responsibility. We have an ace in the hole now. We have a supervisor that's on there, and hopefully we can have a better dialogue with her. But, you know, let's do these programs, but let's do something that actually happens. Does that mean, do we have to reduce some of the programs to actually get things done? I know people are talking about, well, how do we judge it? How effective are these? And if you have so many, it's a little hard to pinpoint it. So let's, I would like to see us narrow down our scope, make it a little shorter period, and see if we can get immediate success, and immediate success could be one or two years, instead of five, seven years out. And that's what we've been doing since I first came on the council. So let's tighten it up, I'd like to see it tightened up, but I'll go with, with everybody else, but I've seen all these programs, they're great, but they just keep going on and on. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Hicks, I saw you raise your hand again.
Yes, I just, because I went near the beginning, I had a couple of questions on points other councilmembers have raised subsequently. One is Councilmember McAllister, since you were away for a couple of years, we, I think we've been listening to you, or did listen to you in the past. And I think we do have, it might not be 100% of what you've been saying over the years, but we have, our housing department, I think, is working on a preservation program, which basically, I'm sure our housing director could describe it better than I can. But it, it, it consists of buying up housing that, why don't I just let Mr. Chen explain it and see if we're already in the process of doing what you've been suggesting for years?
Great, thank you. What you're referring to is the $20 million funding pool that we're trying to put together as part of Housing Element Program 3.2, the displacement response strategy. And that's our overall acquisition preservation work that we're trying to do. We're evaluating how to put that funding together with the notion that the city would contribute an upfront $4 million commitment in order to leverage external funding partners. So still, we're still working on that. And then we're also evaluating the ways in which the funding might be structured, so that the funding can get out the door quickly, to be able to identify organizations that have expertise in doing the work, whether that is the acquisition of the, the projects, the renovations of the projects, or the operations of the project. So there are a lot of components to what a project would be, but what we're trying to do right now is to stand up that $20 million fund.
Okay, so if that, so, and I think you're talking about an acquisition and preservation program, maybe not, you, you know, you can tell me after, after, I think we are, and if that's what you're suggestion, suggesting, I would support it, because I think we're in the process of doing it. Maybe you have some tweaks. And then my other comment is on the, the idea of a navigation center, because I think there are, in my experience, there, there, it's a thorny issue, there are good and bad things about them. The good thing being, it's a place everyone knows, it's the one place where you send everybody, or where you go if you have questions. The, the bad thing is that it's not a place, it's not a place where, if you don't have a house and you don't have a job, you often don't have a lot to do with your time, so it's, often becomes a hangout. And in, and I think that's a really thorny problem. I think it's a problem that can be worked through, but I just want to, I want to be fully aware of sort of the upside and downside. I mean, to be quite honest with you, I've seen some in San Francisco, I wondered why people complained about them. And then I've walked through some that are, they're a big challenge, with people who have the least to do in your community, basically living on the sidewalk and doing things, behaviors that you don't want to inflict on a community, a neighborhood. So that's a thorny issue that we would have to work through, how to, how to make it, you know, come out on the positive side, not on the negative side of that. Anyway, those are my comments on sort of the questions I had about things other councilmembers have raised.
Great, thank you. So I think before we continue on with the comments on other people's comments, I'd love to be able to answer the questions. And then, and then I also feel, since it's a study session, perhaps it's, before we get into a further dialogue, maybe we can do a straw poll, and we can just see if folks are headed down that direction. I think that'd probably be helpful for staff, and they have something that they can go and take a look at, and then come back for a final decision. Does that sound all right? Okay. So for questions one, and, for question one, yes, I agree with the recommended vision, guiding principles, goals, and strategies. I think one of the things I really appreciate about the, the vision is, when I had originally talked to staff, I think we had highlighted like our federal partnerships, but I think, given the ever-changing climate, focusing on regional, so our county partners, as well as our state, I think are where we're really going to be leaning towards. So really appreciate that tweak from staff, and just want to highlight that for folks, that it's going to be a large effort. Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, I forgot to thank staff. Thank you to staff for this presentation. I think it's really illuminating to share almost a decade of, of hard work that the city, our, our partners have been working on, as well as feedback from our residents and those who have lived experiences being vulnerable and sharing with, with us to have the report we have tonight. I'm so sorry that I just dove right in, but really wanted to thank everyone for that. And I, I know that there's more work to be done, so. And then moving on to question two, yes, I agree with the recommended actions for short and, and medium-term funding. I'm just appreciative that we have a community and a staff who's thinking about funding, and appreciated too, and the call out of the plan on showing us where we're searching for the matches. I'd love to see obviously even more match fun. I'd love to see obviously even more match funds for some of these. But it's really helpful for us to see and highlight the vision of working on those regional partnerships. And then for question three, I know that this will be a straw poll that we're taking, but I do feel one of the lessons learned is direct assistance with no strings attached seems to be most helpful in assisting our vulnerable communities. And anything that we can do to kind of loosen the strings there so that people have that flexibility achieves our goal of, I think, tackling our unhoused numbers that councilmember Shawalter was talking about. I really appreciate the conversation about, I'll call it a resource center. I think, want to, and I appreciate the comments about kind of the thorny topics that can come up when having a navigation center. I think how I might couch it as a straw poll is for staff to look into if there's maybe a partner, a entity, whether it's MOVE or CSA or some other, I would say, nonprofit who's in the work every day that could, if they are interested. I also think one of the things we haven't talked about is feedback opportunity. So council will receive emails on this is a program that need, this is an idea I have for this program, or this is an experience I'm having in this site. And I feel, I'd love for us to, as we're talking about resources, I don't know how residents can, those living in some of our communities or navigating the programs can give the feedback. It tackles something that other people have talked about in terms of best practices. I don't know what that would be called, but I think it's resources for those who are unhoused and need them, but also those, as the vice mayor was saying, who needs to understand what Mountain View offers and what we might be able to provide just to our fellow residents. But also how we can point people to a place where they can provide feedback for some of the programs that we, that we run, I think would be helpful. I know like the county has what, like their 311, the city of San Jose has their 311. Bless you. I know that, I know that when I was working for county supervisor Semidion, he created this card called the homeless help card. I'm sure he shared that with all of us up here and with staff. I don't know if that was helpful or not for those residents. So is it the little cards? I don't know. I'm sure that we can get feedback on that. But anything we can do to bring greater efficiency so that those who are unhoused don't need to go to this site, to this location, to that location, we're trying to reduce the hurdles. So that's some of the feedback that I have on that. So we'll see where the straw polls land. Any other comments? Councilmember McAllister, you had your hand up, would you like?
Well, I just want to make a brief shout out to Brian over here because it was his help in partnership to get the safe parking going. And so it wasn't a one person that was working with the community to find answers. And so I thank you. And I continue to see you, when I saw you last night, I go, oh, you're still fighting. So thank you so much for hanging in there and doing it. Thank you, councilmember Ink, oh, that was, yeah. But yes, the housing thing that I was thinking of was what happened, the reason I want us to buy it instead of leveraging it is that that takes three, four, five years to get something done. And you see how long it takes for all these projects to go. If we buy something, we have immediate resources at our hand and therefore we can do it. And instead of, you know, trying to get these programs implemented, we have a solution. Now, I have my number three, which would be buy housing or preservation. I don't think it will go far, but it's, you know, we're making headway. At least you acknowledged that I was thinking about it for years, so that was nice. But I will support whatever you guys do. I know I've been out of the circuit for about four years. When I left, I went cold turkey, so I haven't been following much. So maybe you've heard a little bit of frustration from me when I said, these are the things I saw years ago and now they're coming along. Maybe lies, they're probably more tightened up a little bit. But if you'd like to see the solution, that's one possibility to go. But I will, I say yes to all your straw votes and hopefully we get this done because it is an important project and important for our citizens. That's all I want to say.
Okay, great, thank you. So let's see. The first straw poll, I think, is from councilmember Ramirez. Do you want to refine the, should we?
Thank you, mayor. So maybe.
Or look to staff?
For the first one that I think we have, we don't need to have a dialogue about is the.
You heard more than four on that one?
Yeah. I heard more than four on the assistance, general assistance.
Okay. So just to clarify, it's moving from just rent relief to direct assistance?
Correct.
Okay. The other I heard was, I think, including, and I don't know if it needs to be called out, but I think for goal five, item 5.3, including the trust program under 5.3, is that what I heard?
Thank you, mayor. I would say, welcoming staff's guidance on this, evaluating alternative response models, including trust, but essentially alternative response models where engaging unhoused residents, it's not necessarily MVPD that is sent out, but a staff person or another service provider.
And that's, that is included and we can incorporate that in our goal or action item, which is looking at an inner-city model. That's definitely a non-sworn model that we'll be looking at, so we'll be able to bring feedback back on that.
Okay. And that's for item 5.3. So would you, would that require a straw poll or it says, it sounds like it's already included, so maybe it's just a tweak of the language for item 5.3? Okay, great, thank you. Did you, I have goal two, service model to functional zero, is that language you wanted to include or?
Yes, thank you. So I'm, and again, welcoming staff's guidance for how to make this actionable. But either a functional zero goal or metric that informs our commitment to increasing interim solutions beyond just the one additional safe parking site.
And I think staff can bring that back. And we've already included some information in response to the question of how the county is framing that, looking at that with a real focus on targeted subpopulations such as families. So I think we can bring back some further information on that for the final.
Okay. So it sounds like no straw poll needed on that one. And that is what, and then I wrote something interim solution. Was that something that you were trying to add?
Yes, I'm, I think I understand the staff summary and that makes sense to me. But just to clarify, so it would, it would also include exploration of another life moves, Mountain View, or some additional interim facilities like graduate houses? Is that on track with what you were suggesting?
It could be potentially, I know the housing department has focused on some different populations, potentially also including education or other areas. We don't have a specific recommendation for you on that. That was mentioned twice that I see it, which also include kind of an evaluation of those types of programs or sort of, we could bring something back in that space.
With like a suggested number, right? So if our goal is, you know, reducing homelessness by 50%, you know, here is some corresponding program or action item that could step up interim solutions to help us achieve that goal? Is that?
Mayor and councilmember Ramirez, if I may. So I think what I'm hearing is the desire to focus on looking at interim solutions beyond just safe parking. I do want to note that Life Moves Mountain View was created as a pilot and the city provided funding that we received through the state. And we are not providing ongoing funding for that program. That really is a site that now life moves overseas. And so I would say that model would be more challenging for the city to probably create another site like that, but that's certainly something we could explore if the majority of council should wish that. But I would say that's still kind of in a pilot stage of seeing how it's going, working through, you know, some of the challenges and issues there. And the city is no longer financially engaged in that going forward. But I think what I'm hearing is really just this desire to look at other alternative interim solutions besides safe parking. And I also want to note just really quickly at the end, the county has very clearly told us that they do not have the funding for additional safe parking lots and that they have provided so much to Mountain View and not other cities that we can certainly look at expanding a safe parking that we have existing, but they are not going to be providing funding for us to do new safe parking sites. So that is a challenge that we would have to overcome. So all that could be explored as part of the interim solutions, but I do want to make that, you know, just make sure that everyone is aware of that because that is a challenge for us.
Okay. So just to clarify, would we need a straw poll on if we wanted to look at alternative interim solutions or not necessary at this time?
I think that staff has built in an item for interim solutions.
Okay.
If you all feel strongly about whether you want to take a straw poll, you could, but I think we're okay with. And it kind of fits in with what you said about the functional zero goal and looking at interim solutions instead of just what we have now.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Hicks, I heard a couple straw polls perhaps from you. I think I took these notes correctly, looking at staff, right? So I think you had said something shoreline area plan designation for affordable housing tax increment district. That's the first one, staff?
Yes.
So I can, I can summarize that. So kind of jumping off of the comments that councilmember Ramirez was making that, you know, we want to do things, but we don't have the money and the county's not going to give us the money most likely, although maybe we know someone there. And, you know, federally, we're less likely to get money and our governor hasn't put aside money for this and maybe won't be able to because he's busy fighting fires and so forth. So this is to explore the possibility of some ongoing funding for affordable, there are two of them, affordable housing through when we redo the shoreline area plan, that's one. And the other is exploring the possibility of doing more safe parking there because we could, because the county won't be funding it and we could be, we could link the funding. Now, those are both just explore because I don't know whether we can actually do them.
Mayor, I'd like to speak on that one too.
Yes, of course.
And councilmember Hicks, thank you. So we had envisioned exploring options for homelessness services and safe parking, given that one of our safe parking lots is in that shoreline area. So that is something that we can certainly incorporate as something to consider when we bring the plan back to you all right now. It's anticipated that we would bring the plan to you all sometime in June, so before the summer recess. And we can also certainly, and have discussed, talking about building the affordable housing component into that as well. So I don't think that's something that we need a straw poll on. Appreciate councilmember Hicks raising that and that's something that we can bring back to you all.
Okay, so you don't need a straw poll on either one?
I'm seeing heads nodding.
Unless people like thumb it down in a big way.
Okay.
Okay, and did, I had another one on legislation.
Yes, go ahead.
But I think other people brought it up, so if they want to chime in, I think councilmember Shawalter brought it up too, but it was just that putting, there's been state legislation around homelessness, but it's not, my understanding, there are better experts here, but it's not concretely in the housing element and that putting some legislation around every city's obligation to serve the homeless in some way as a part of the housing element to lobby for that would be a good idea.
I'm seeing heads nodding on that. We're engaged, various cities, I'm seeing one had saying no, so maybe you do want to take a straw poll on that one. But just as an update, the state agencies and various legislators are engaging cities and staff for feedback on this next housing element cycle because they've received a lot of feedback of various kinds from different cities. So if there is a desire to advocate for some sort of homelessness, some sort of carve-out in the housing element, maybe take a straw poll on that one then.
Okay, thank you, city manager McCarthy. So how about, I'll just say explore, including, I don't know, engaging with our state legislators on homelessness related to next housing element? Does that sound okay? Okay. Okay, I see six and then.
Do you like to vote your no?
Okay. Okay, that's a six, one straw poll.
And mayor, if I may, make a suggestion. Another thing that we could think about doing along with our legislative advocacy firm and in working with some of our regional partners is advocating for more state funding towards homelessness efforts. Because as you all know, that got cut out of the state budget. So there's just less funds coming to the county and cities. So perhaps that's another avenue of advocacy that.
I think I'm comfortable including that in that motion. Are the six who said yes, okay with that? Okay. Yes, okay, great. All right. And I think, so then, I didn't have anything from you. Okay. I think we touched on. So I don't, I don't know if they're, we can, we can take a straw poll on it. I mean, I don't know, I think you had talked about bolstering the housing help center. So I don't know if it's to call it a housing help center, one-stop shop, navigation center. Perhaps it's best to just leave it with staff to explore, looking into if there's, I think that Pastor Leung said resource center. So I think perhaps the straw poll could be exploring any of those options? Is that okay? Okay. So. I don't know that, does the, go ahead.
So our housing department does provide help through the housing help center, which might be a little different than what some of you have talked about regarding a resource hub or navigation center. I will say that the community services agency does serve as somewhat of a resource hub and navigation center. So that would be my recommendation is if you all are interested in exploring that further, I believe it would best be probably through a partnership that we have already. So that's one thing. And then the bolstering, the housing help center, I think is a different thing, which is what we're already doing where we're just kind of providing guidance on folks that may need help. And that could tie in with your direct financial assistance program. So I think two different things, but you could give direction for staff to explore which way would work best to bring back to you all.
Okay. So why don't we take the last one first? So all those interested in bolstering our housing help center and having staff explore that and bringing that back to council? This is different. That's, that'll be the next one. This one is we have a housing help center that already exists and maybe finding ways to shore that up, I think is what the vice mayor was saying. So, okay, that looked like six. Okay, and then the second one was looking at working with our community partner, perhaps CSA, on the resource hub. Okay, and that looks, I thought you were interested. Yes. Okay, unanimous. Okay, thank you. Well, it's important for staff and the public, so I want to give accurate numbers. All right. Did you have anything? I think we were able to, okay. All right, and I think I have everything and then we'll move on to councilmember McAllister. So was that a straw motion you were putting forward or just a comment? I guess I'll say, from what Housing Director Chen said, I think we're exploring preservation and acquisition, so I'm comfortable with what the city's already doing. We've made the $20 million commitment, but I don't, I don't know if you're proposing a different program or explorations of something different.
I'm proposing that we directly do it ourselves instead of going through different programs that we've, one of the last, a couple of months ago, I saw a property in Mountain View, 22 units for $8 million, so that was $500,000 a door compared to what's being, building a new one, which is over a million plus. So by doing that, we have direct control and we have something that's affordable that the city can afford and then we could potentially turn that over to a third-party property manager. But, so that's what I was proposing. That's my straw. But, you know, persistent on it, so tonight might be the night, but I'll keep working on it.
Councilmember Hicks?
So, yeah, I have a question because to me that sounds really similar to, it sounds like you could have called the city manager or text, emailed her and that it's pretty similar to what we're doing already. Is it really different? Is it a whole different program?
What I'm inferring from Councilmember McAllister's comments is that there is perhaps a much greater direct involvement of the city, either through the acquisition, potentially there's some sort of operations or property management or services element and in a way being a landlord. And so I don't know if there was a clarification there, but that's some of the takeaways that I'm hearing. And if so, that would be, that would be different than just an acquisition preservation fund where we would provide the funding versus being either a landlord operator.
You're right. That is the critical difference and thank you for spelling that out. What I guess I meant is that people could bring up, if they see opportunities, they can bring that up. Maybe there's not a mechanism for that now.
One of the things we're trying to explore right now is how to set up the funds so that the funding can be dispersed quickly and it doesn't necessarily need to go through a city process to have the sites be acquired. Should there be an interest of having more of a city role engaged in the acquisition or the operations of it? We would need to do further analysis. But one of the things that we are looking at is how to structure the funding so it can be maybe more flexible, fund innovative preservation opportunities and have external partners be the acquirers and operators of it.
Okay. So I would be supporting the straw poll if it was exploring super quick ways of doing that, but not if the city would be operating it themselves. So it depends on how it's phrased, whether I'll support it or not.
I'm not advocating that the city operated. I'm just saying the city buys it, the property managers, like just like any other property was out there.
Okay. Well, I think that from what I'm hearing, the city is working on this and trying to find streamlined ways to act as fast as possible on these opportunities and expedite. So I'm comfortable with the program that we have. I don't know, I'm, so anyone else have any other comments or shall we take it?
I agree with you, Mayor. I think the, I saw a reference to the Acquisition Rehabilitation Program, if I'm not mistaken, in the plan that's before us and it feels consistent in intent and goal with what Councilmember McAllister is.
Okay. So then...
Question for Wayne, please.
Okay.
Wayne, how long would, in your idea of how your acquisition would go, how long would that take? If something came along, sort of walk us through what you thought the process might be.
Under the current thinking, once the fund is set up and perhaps we're dispersing the funding through a third-party administrator, then the funding can be done very quickly. It would not necessarily need a city process. It could be done through a third-party agent, much like some of you may have heard about the San Francisco Housing Accelerator Fund. So that's one of the models that we are looking at. If the city were to be the acquirer, then we would have to go through the Public Works Real Estate sort of transaction process and we would have a process to go through there.
Yeah.
So you're saying that you would give a third-party money to buy the property?
What we discussed last year when we were thinking about this $20 million funding pool is that the third-party administrator, and this is again the concept that's being explored and developed, is they're holders of the funds, like the Housing Accelerator Fund or the Housing Trust, for example. And then a CLT or an organization can go to that organization, say, we have a fund, we have a site, a property that we've identified and we'd like to tap into the money and there would be a quick ability for the funding to be dispersed.
And then who would have the authority to how that property is used?
One of the things that we're, several things, we're looking at what the guidelines would be for qualifying property and for an organization to qualify for that, much like we would do for underwriting guidelines. So those are all things that we're developing largely through the Community Ownership Action Plan process to develop this fund.
Okay. Are you comfortable then or, okay. So I think, okay, great. All right. So I don't think then that there's a need for the straw poll on that. So with that, may I look to staff to summarize our study session?
Mayor, if I may, before, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, of course.
So I also heard a couple of things that were low-hanging fruit that I think staff will probably give me head nods on. So maybe some sort of hotline or helpline accompanied by help cards or something that we may be able to give out. I think we have something similar, but that's something that we can explore. And then I do want to ask council for a straw poll about safe parking. So you've heard what I mentioned, the county's constraints and willingness or not to expand. And I heard different things said by different council members, keeping it the way it is, expanding it, looking differently. So I just want to make sure that council is clear on keeping the safe parking that it is now and for now, not expanding since we don't have the county resources, but I would look for a straw poll on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the prudent and cautious approach. I am interested in exploring Councilmember Hicks's suggestion of using some of the Shoreline Community Funds, perhaps to expand if that feels like a happy middle ground that would work for staff. Would that be acceptable?
Yes, I think we can look into that and that would be part of the Shoreline Area Plan discussion and we can talk about that further as staff. I think that realistically, though, the challenge is space. So we'd probably be looking at our own lot.
Well, yeah, that's what I was going to say. It seems to me over the years that the money has been really the least of our problems with respect to safe parking has been finding a place. So I guess my feeling is that we should continue to be open to additional spaces and if an opportunity arises, you know, then we should, then we should see about the money. It's, the opportunities have been so sparse that I, you know, I don't think this is a funding thing we're going to have to deal with immediately, but I just don't want to give the impression that we're not interested in increasing. We are if an opportunity arose. It's just, that's been a big problem. That's my feeling.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yeah, I think I have sort of a hybrid way of, the way I'm looking at it is that I would preferably have it in the expansion in the Shoreline area. Places that are leveled and so forth are hard to find. So if there were another situation like we've had in the past, you know, partnering with a nonprofit houser that's not going to develop soon, perhaps the county could fund that and we could fund our current shoreline parking, do a switch. We could fund our shoreline parking with shoreline funds and we could fund the other parking with county funds. If that's possible, we do have a friend at the county, maybe she would help us with the switch. And I want, you know, I just want to underline that I am not, for me, the long-term solution for people is not to live in RVs, but that is our current majority homeless population and to me, that's preferable to people living on park benches and in tents along Stevens Creek Trail, which seem to be the other options. So I would like, and we're going to lose some of that safe parking, and there are already complaints from particularly business owners about the number of RVs parking around their main offices. As Councilmember Showalter, when she was mayor, and I had a meeting with one who was pretty angry, so, and rightfully so. So I would like to look at those kind of two interlinked options.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if you would like staff to give a overarching summary of what we've heard?
Sure. Well, I just wanted to say, I think that that's been robust conversation. I think that we're just open to staff exploring any and all options related to safe parking. And I, for me, I don't, I think we're in a good spot. I don't think we need a straw poll, so I just wanted to kind of put the period on that. Okay, great. And if staff could help us with the summary, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Sure. So staff has heard that, I'll try to put them in buckets, that we will incorporate additional information as we've said we would regarding metrics as well as functional zero. We will ensure that we look at the non-sworn as we discussed, that was an item we already have as a target, which would be working with other cities regarding an outreach program. In the space of interim, we heard the comments that we just wrapped up associated with safe parking as well as if there were any other interim options, housing options, that particular action item that we can flesh out and share with the council. I heard also a majority on the incorporation of the safe parking component in the Shoreline Area Plan focus in the next, in the next year. And I heard another bucket would be legislative components and engagement there, including associated with the housing element, engaging in that space and then some things that we already have in the plan as the city manager mentioned about advocating for funding at the city level. Then there was also a discussion associated with ensuring we share additional information or see if there's any economies of scale or enhancements to bolster the Housing Support Center and what that alignment would be with the existing CSA service as a resource hub. And at the end, we had the discussion about the staff being, continuing forward on our existing acquisition plan. And those, I think, are the main things and I'm looking to my team to see if I missed anything else major.
No, thank you. Got it.
Great. All right. Well, then, I think that...
You have a lot from input and thank you to my colleagues. So I think now we'll just take a maybe five-minute recess before we move on to the regular session so that people can take a quick break. Is that okay?
All right. Be back in five minutes. Thank you. All right, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Mountain View City Council and the Shoreline Regional Park Community of January 28, 2025. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll move on to roll call. The city clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Hicks?
Here.
Councilmember McAllister? Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Here.
Mayor Kame?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Great. Thanks, everyone. We have a few quick announcements before we jump into our business this evening. First, you may notice a few changes to our meeting agenda template this year. To align with our language access and multicultural community engagement policies, we now have a cover page devoted strictly to instructions in English, Spanish, and Chinese on accessing meetings virtually and requesting interpretation. All business of the body will begin on the second page of the agenda. In addition, when city council meets in closed session, the closed session report will now occur at the beginning of the agenda before the consent calendar. If no closed session meeting has been scheduled, the agenda item for closed session report will be removed from the agenda. And lastly, you may notice up here our Lunar New Year decorations that I brought. I want to invite everyone to join us to celebrate the rich traditions of Lunar New Year this Saturday, February 1, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Mountain View Community Center. This multicultural event will showcase traditional performances, hands-on crafts, engaging games, and community booths. It's really exciting that I think this is the third year that the city is hosting this amazing event. I hope to see you all there. The Year of the Snake is considered one of like transformation, renewal. So despite everything else that may be going on, I hope that we can adhere to that. And this is the third year that the state of California is celebrating Lunar New Year as an official holiday. So it's just really exciting. And so I'm wearing my red for good luck. It starts tomorrow, but you know, you can't have any shortage of good luck. So I'm going to move on to item four, our consent calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. If an item is pulled from the consent calendar, it will be considered separately following approval of the balance of the consent calendar. Also, if council members would like to make a comment on the item, they can comment, but it doesn't need to be pulled. If you'd like to speak on these items or the next item, oral communication on non-agenda items in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? Councilmember Shaw Walter?
I would just like to pull a few items for comment, not to.
You can, so you don't need to pull them? I believe in discussing with the city clerk, you may just comment.
Right. I'm just going to comment on them. Right. And basically, I wanted to bring up item 4.3, the water and sewer main across 101, the 4.4 landfill gas collection system expansion, and the 4.6 recycled water system expansion. I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that these are important infrastructure projects that are just a vital part of local government to take care of our infrastructure. And it's just very important that we do this. And so I want to thank the staff for bringing it forward and let everybody know that we are paying attention to these systems that are underground that we all utilize.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember McAllister?
You'll have to help me with the procedure. So if I have a comment on one and a question on another, how would you like me to proceed?
Comment you can do now. But if you'd like to pull, if you have a question, I believe it needs to be pulled. So do you want to tell me which one you want to pull first?
4.5, I'll comment on 4.5 and pull 4.8.
Okay, great. Okay, 4.8 will be pulled, and feel free to comment on 4.5.
4.5, I submitted, this is where we're looking at our work plan. And I had some questions about going forward. And I was, I'm just trying to bring this to people's attention, what my thought is, that we have a lot of projects and the increase in costs because we have so many projects, the delay or revising it or finding the details, it gets very cost burdened, and we are starting to see limited funds. So I asked staff to find out how many projects that we are doing that exceeded budget because of delays or that how many, what can we do to expedite projects? And that's why I asked those questions and see, because it is, we're talking millions of dollars when we delay things. And when we are talking about adding projects, I found it was interesting is that when they're going to ask us to give projects, but we already have like 47 projects on there. And if the goal from the council planning committee that was met before was to reduce things, I found it interesting that we're going to add more things that we already have a whole list on, and that maybe we should concentrate on the list that was presented, that you guys presented years ago, instead of bringing on more projects. And that's just a priority-type deal. It's something that starts considering. Because when I came along, I saw these projects, we need to narrow it down, reduce the load on the staff. And I appreciate the council committee saying quality over quantity. And that's what something I was pointing out. So take a look at those questions. My comments, and then comment, question on.
We'll come back.
Come back. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other items to be pulled or any other comments on the consent calendar? All right. Would any member of the public joining us virtually or in person like to provide comment on any of these items? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk. We'll take in-person speakers first. And each speaker will have three minutes. I'm not seeing any in-person, so we'll move on to virtual. I think, let's see. I see a hand. Bruce England.
Thanks, Mayor. Bruce England Wisman Station Drive and a member of Green Spaces Mountain View. I'll be very brief. We submitted a letter which went into quite a bit of detail. I'm not going to repeat all that. But there are particular plans of interest to us of the biodiversity strategy and urban forest plan and the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan. And then also something that hasn't been talked about so much here is the dark sky ordinances, which seems to have been bumped up in the staff board. That was interesting to see. So we're very interested in seeing those move forward. The quality over quantity makes sense, but we also believe in ambition where we need to get things done that are very important to the community. And as you know, sometimes, and as Councilmember McAllister alluded to, things can sometimes take a very long time to get done. And so we are interested in seeing these important things coming to the finish line. We hope that those won't be delayed due to the challenges that staff has that we do acknowledge and recognize. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So I'll bring this item back for council action and note that a motion approved the consent calendar should also include the reading and the title of the resolution attached to consent calendar item 4.2. So we have a motion by Councilmember Clark.
And so I'll move the balance of the consent calendar, which is everything except 4.8, which was pulled and includes item 4.2, to adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Mountain View, amending council policy B2, the investment policy, to be read and title only. Further reading waived.
Great. Thank you. We'll vote. All right. And the balance passes unanimously. So we'll go back to item 4.8. Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah, I, if you notice, I'm starting to go down a theme of fiscal responsibility. And when I was looking at 4.5, the, no, this 4.5 was I was looking at responsibility of making sure we get projects and keep the money down. 4.8, which is about the Magic Bridge, that came about or started when I was on council in 2016 or so. And at the time, the council said, we're going to give you so much of a donation, and Magic Bridge, you are going to collect the rest of the money. And I thought that was a great idea. It was a great project. And what has evolved, it looks like, is that their funding ability wasn't what they had hoped for. And it cost the city more than they had thought it would. And I'm using this as an example of going forward when we look at projects, make sure that there's processes in place so that people are able to fulfill their commitment. And then when I saw on there that it says that there's a $1.99, $1,990,000 is still the initial target that we're going to collect from these people, from Magic Bridge's donations, that there was a financial obligation inserted in here that says, if the original target of $1.99, $199 million, $1,990,000 had not been met, one year after the park is open, staff will return to council to determine next steps for any additional progress payments made to the Magic Bridge. And I'm asking, I asked this question in here, and I said, well, what are those steps? Because I think it would be prudent to say, if you don't do, here's what's, you know, here's the consequences of it, instead of coming it back to council somewhere down the line saying, well, what do you think? So I was hoping staff would come up and say, here's what we could do. And again, this would be something that we look forward as we look at projects coming forward for us that are beneficial to the city, again, with our limited funds, that we have a process to say, yes, we can do that, but you have to partner up and take care of your original obligation. So the question to the staff is, what do you think would be the next steps to get these additional payments if they don't do it?
Good evening. Thank you for the question. Ed Arango, Assistant Public Works Director. When council provided the direction on what you saw in the council report as if Magical Bridge does not fulfill their funding obligation, council directed staff to say, come back to us and determine the next steps. Some of those next steps that staff could recommend would be one of two things. One is no further progress payments would be made or a proportional share of progress payments in respect to the amount of funding that Magical Bridge raised. And these are just ideas that staff has today. But again, we would bring it forth to council to make sure that there's support for one or both of those before we would move forward with any future progress payments.
Okay, so, thank you. So my comment back to the council is, if we do financial, take an obligation like that, it should be clear to the person that's receiving the money what we should do instead of coming back. So everything that we do, we need to make sure that there's a consequence if you don't honor your obligation instead of coming back. Because in this particular case, it's a great project, but it costs us $7 million more than we were planning to do in anticipation. So going forward, as projects come along, we would hope that the staff would say, okay, it's fully vetted on what we're going to do and how we're going to get our money back. Thank you.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes, I agree. Lesson learned.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. I don't think it needs to be read, so we'll just vote. All right. And that passes unanimously. So we'll move on to item five, oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction or up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. If you'd like to speak on this item or the next item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. Would any member of the public joining us virtually or in person like to provide comment on this item? Let's see, I see one hand virtually, no one in person. So it'll be three minutes. Bruce England.
Thanks again, Mayor. Bruce England Wisman Station Drive. I just want to bring up something that I've talked with some of you about over time, is the idea that Joan McDonald raised about putting a, you know, small plaque on the seat that Julie Lovins once sat in, in the back row there in council chambers. Had a conversation with some people the other day where we were a little challenged even remembering what that seat was because it's been a long time since she served in her role with the League of Women Voters there in chambers. But Councilmember Ramirez knows, I'm sure. And Councilmember Shaw Walter probably remembers too. But there are a lot of people who don't even know who she is or remember because it's been a while since she passed away. But it seems like people are interested in doing this, but it just has to get done. Seems like a minor task. So Julie represented a lot of institutional knowledge in the community, and she's worthy of acknowledgement for all the work that she did over the years. And so I hope that council can make that happen. Maybe it's a mayor action. I'm not sure exactly what the protocol ought to be. But just bringing it up for your attention again. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, I don't see any other hands. So we'll move on to item six, which is our public hearing. Item 6.1 is our 198 Easy Street Residential Row House Development. Assistant Community Development Director Amber Blazinski and Consulting Senior Planner Margaret Neto will present the item. If you'd like to speak on this item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. All right, sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor Kamay and council members. My name is Amber Blazinski. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director, and I will be presenting this item to you tonight. I'm joined at the dais by Margaret Neto, who's the project planner. The project? Sorry, technical difficulties. The project at 198 Easy Street is on a .51 acre site that's located on the west side of Easy Street between the Highway 85 on-ramp and Gladys Court in the R3-3 zoning district with a special design overlay. Surrounding land uses include a mix of multifamily and single-family residential uses to the north, south, and east, and Highway 85 to the west. The applicant is requesting a planned unit development permit, a special design permit, a development review permit, and a vesting tentative map to construct a five-unit detached row house development to replace one existing residential unit, and a heritage tree removal permit to remove eight heritage trees. The site is in a special design overlay zoning district due to its proximity to Highway 85, and therefore, the project requires a special development permit. However, the applicant is not requesting any exceptions to the development standards, as is sometimes allowed within this overlay district. The site has a general plan land use designation of medium density residential and is located in the Moffett-Wisman Planning Area. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan designation, which allows a mix of single and multifamily housing with a residential character appropriate to a range of densities and a broad mix of housing types. As mentioned previously, the project is located in the R3-3 Special Design Zoning District. The R3 zoning district allows row house development consistent with the row house guidelines. This project complies with the row house guidelines and no exceptions are requested. The proposed vesting tentative map for the project includes five residential lots and one common lot for a private shared driveway, guest and bike parking, and a common open space. The existing single-family home on-site is exempt from the Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Act and the Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance, and is not a protected unit requiring replacement under SB 330. As you can see from the site plan, the property is accessed from a driveway that connects to the Gladys Court cul-de-sac. All units have two-car garages and two guest parking spaces, and four bike parking spaces are provided in the common area on the eastern edge of the site. Each unit entrance has an entry walk on Easy Street. A community open space area is located adjacent to Unit 1 and the cul-de-sac. Additional open space is proposed in the form of a play area adjacent to the guest parking. Private open space for most of the units is provided by front yards, first-story porches, and second-story balconies. The project site contains 15 trees, including 11 heritage trees and four non-heritage trees. The project proposes to retain a grove of eucalyptus and palm trees adjacent to State Route 85, and remove eight heritage trees that consist of oak, cedar, Chinese pistachio, palm, and eucalyptus, and four non-heritage trees that consist of palm and cypress. The project was similarly entitled in 2021 and since expired. However, the previous entitlement included the removal of additional heritage trees. In the current entitlement, staff from the Planning Division, Public Works Department, and Urban Forestry Division closely evaluated the health of the existing trees and identified opportunities to preserve two additional trees. The Arborist Report found that the eight heritage trees proposed for removal are in poor health or within the developable area. The typical replacement ratio for the removal of the heritage trees is 2 to 1, and non-heritage trees is 1 to 1. The applicant is proposing 22, 24-inch box replacement trees, which represents a replacement ratio of approximately 2.25 to 1, which exceeds the 2 to 1 heritage tree replacement ratio. The design of the units incorporates traditional architectural elements such as porches and balconies, wood railings, trellises, shutters, and gable hip and shed roof forms. Exterior materials include stucco and horizontal siding accented by decorative stone veneer and composition shingle and tile roof materials. Units are differentiated through massing, varied roof forms, projections and offsets, porch elements, and exterior materials and colors. The project contains approximately 11,083 square feet, or 49% of common open space, which meets the minimum 35% requirement. The common open space includes seating in addition to a flexible, unprogrammed landscaped area. The common open space area is located along the northern edge of the site, adjacent to Gladys Court. An additional, smaller, common open space area is located along the western side of the site and includes a children's play area. Staff recommends finding that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Section 15332, which is infill projects, for the reasons described on the slide and in the associated project findings. This exemption applies to projects consistent with the general plan land use designation and policies, zoning regulations and designations, and projects that are within city limits, less than five acres in size, surrounded by urban uses, and don't result in any significant environmental impacts. Additionally, the project is screened out from the city's VMT threshold as a multifamily residential development of 20 units or fewer. On May 11, 2021, the council approved a similar project on this site. However, the previous entitlements expired on May 11, 2023, and the applicant did not request an extension at the time. No changes have been proposed to the architectural design of the unit since the previous entitlement, which was reviewed by the Development Review Committee in 2021. On December 18, 2024, the project was reviewed by the Zoning Administrator and Subdivision Committee at a public hearing where it was recommended for approval to City Council. Staff received two emails prior to that hearing, which raised concerns about heritage tree removals, off-site improvements, air quality concerns from Highway 85, and project phasing. Two members of the public spoke at the meeting regarding concerns about the proposed heritage tree removals. Staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution approving the project and associated tentative map in keeping with the language shown on this slide. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicants also have a brief presentation. Great, thank you. All right, we'll now hear from the applicant, Foy Phan, Architect Phan Architects. The applicant will have seven minutes to present.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I'm Foy Phan from Phan Architects. I'm the project manager for this project, and I would like to thank you guys for considering this project tonight. And I'm here to answer any questions anybody would have. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll now bring it back to council. Does any member of the council have any questions?
Mayor, did you want to take disclosures?
Oh, yes, apologies. I think we'll just stop the timer for the speaker, and then do council members, perhaps we can just do a raise hand? Is that okay, City Clerk Glazer, if they've met? Or do they need to verbally? Is it okay if we do a raised hand, if they've met with the applicant?
I think if they've met with the applicant, they should give a brief disclosure about the meeting, when it was and generally what they spoke about.
Understood, thank you. Has anyone met with the applicant? All right, I am not seeing any. So we'll move on to questions from council members. Do any council members have questions? I don't see any. All right. Would any member of the public joining us virtually or in person like to provide comment on any item or on this item? Please do so. Oh, okay, I don't see any in person, but virtually. Bruce, do you have a comment on this one?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Yep, Bruce England, Wisman Station Drive. I'm going to wear two hats on this one. For Greenspace's Mountain View, as we said in the letter that we submitted on the work plan item, it's been a real challenge for us to contest tree removals, which comes up all the time. We don't have an updated tree policy because the Bud Everse Strategy and Urban Forest Plan has not been completed yet. And so we find ourselves, you know, raising objections and concerns along the way. And so that's the background, and just want to say what we usually say, which is, we always find it unfortunate when tree removals are approved. Sometimes it's necessary in a project development, and that's just reality. But we do want to see as much sensitivity as possible on everybody's parts to preserve as many trees as possible, even with a replacement policy. Mature trees have their own value, and removing them is impactful, and that should be recognized. And then for, and something of interest from the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, Mountain View team is filling in our sidewalk gaps where we can. And in the staff report, there was a section in there about filling in that gap there on Easy Street as part of this project, at least as I understood it. And so we absolutely support that. We do have several sidewalk gaps remaining in our town. And any opportunity we have to fill those in so that we have complete, comprehensive sidewalk network is really what we're after. So I was glad to see that. We were glad to see that in the staff report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I don't see any other raised hands, so I'll bring the item back for council deliberation action, and note that a motion to approve the recommendation should also include reading the title of the resolutions attached to the report. Councilmember McAllister?
Okay. Adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View conditionally approving a planned unit development permit, special design permit, and a development review permit to construct a five-unit detached row house project, and a heritage tree removal permit to remove eight heritage trees on a .51 acre site on the west side of Easy Street between State Highway 85 and Gladys Court, 198 Easy Street, and finding that the project is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Section 15332, to be read in title only. Further reading waived. Adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View conditionally approving a vested tentative map to create five lots and one common lot on .51 acre lot at 198 Easy Street, to be read in title only. Further reading waived.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember McAllister and seconded by Councilmember Hicks. So we'll take a vote. Great, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item seven, new business. 7.1 is potential modifications to allow rent increases and mobile home rent stabilization ordinance Housing Element Program 3.2. Housing Director Wayne Chen will present the item. If you'd like to speak on this item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for your time tonight to review this item, potential modifications to allow rent increases under the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ordinance. A brief background, Measure V was passed by the voters in 2016, and in 2018, the Rental Housing Committee determined that the CSFRA did not cover mobile homes. During the FY 2019, the item was added to the council's FY 2019, 2021 strategic priorities to evaluate mobile home ordinance and to mirror that after the provisions of the CSFRA, while factoring in necessary modifications to address the unique characteristics of mobile home parks and residents. As such, an ordinance was adopted and went into effect in October of 2021. The MHRSO has certainly various sections, but it includes a purpose that is also mirrored off of the Apartment Rent Stabilization Ordinance, which is to balance the interests of protecting residents while also providing landlords and park owners a fair return. The key elements of the ordinance is applying to both types of residents. A resident who either owns a mobile home but rents the space from a park owner, or a renter who rents both the space and the unit. The key provisions of that MHRSO, again mirroring the CSFRA, is having the annual general adjustment to be raised by 100% of the Consumer Price Index, the All Items Index, CPIU. The floor is 2%, and the ceiling is 5%. There are alternative and additional ways for rent increases, including the capital improvement pass-through process and fair return process known as the Maintenance of Net Operating Income, or MNOI process. The RHC oversees implementation of the MHRSO. The Housing Element includes Program 3.2, which is the city's overall tenant displacement response strategy, which includes multiple items, including this one. And what you'll see on the screen are essentially the scope that the Housing Element is providing to the city, as well as the deadline to complete this. So it's to study amendments such that allowed rent increases are consistent with or less than comparable jurisdictions with rent control for mobile home parks, and the deadline is March 31 of 2021. When the Housing Element was being developed, the reason this became an important topic was that the ordinance that went into effect in 2021, the first two years of rent increases experienced high years of inflation as we were in the midst of the pandemic. And in both of the first two years, the inflation was high and exceeded the 5% ceiling. So residents experienced compounding 5% increases. And that was a key reason why this particular item was added to the Housing Element. As such, the intent and the scope of the Housing Element is really focused on reviewing the AGA and the related floor and ceiling provisions of the MHRSO. As part of staff's review, we looked at the five things on the screen, carefully reviewing the purpose of the MHRSO, what the Housing Element noted that the city needs to do, looking at comparable jurisdictions, considering unique characteristics of mobile homes and residents, and feedback from stakeholders. Just to provide a summary in terms of the comparable jurisdictions through each of the three categories, regarding the AGA, Mountain View is at the top of the range, but it's within the range of other jurisdictions. There are no other jurisdictions above 100% CPI. But the majority of jurisdictions, though, are below 100% CPI and primarily 75% CPI and below. Regarding the floor, Mountain View is mid-range. Most of the jurisdictions are on the low end of the range without a floor, and there are a handful of cities that are above 2%. And with regards to the ceiling, Mountain View is on the lower end of the range. There's a better distribution across jurisdictions with regards to ceiling. Some jurisdictions don't have a ceiling at all. Here is just a summary chart that visually displays the summary that I just provided. In the red is Mountain View. You can see the distribution of the other cities. And again, you can see how they lay across both jurisdictions and the number of mobile homes covered, with 75% CPI being the most commonly used one for jurisdictions and the most spaces covered. With regards to the floor, here is Mountain View at 2%. And again, you can see that most of the jurisdictions have no floor. And the range of ceilings, Mountain View is here at 5%. With regard to the unique characteristics, one of the things that the city did was With regard to the unique characteristics, one of the things that the city did was conduct a survey back in 2020 when the ordinance was being evaluated and developed. And some of the key findings that came out of the survey was just the, maybe the unique characteristics of the mobile home residents. There's a significant proportion of the residents who are seniors. There are many folks who rely on fixed income or are single-person households. Most of the residents are owners but still rent the space. 16% of the overall residents are renters, meaning they rent both the unit and the space. There were two resident stakeholder meetings, one virtually, one held in person last year in the fall. And the common themes that we heard was that mobile home residents are a vulnerable population for the various reasons we just discussed, that if you're an owner of a mobile home, you have higher costs than renting. Those multiple years, the two years of 5% increases aren't sustainable, yet it can cause displacement with still high barriers of finding replacement housing that mobile home residents may experience. There was the comment that because the mobile homes were not covered under the CSFRA, in the interim years, there may have been higher rent increases. We did receive comment that rents around 3% or so was sort of expected in the norm, but the strongest protections would come in the form of something like a 60% CPI with a ceiling of 3% and no floor. And the thought that the operating cost of mobile home parks would just be lower than rental apartment buildings and so could absorb a different AGA. We had one stakeholder meeting for park owners, and some themes that we heard there was that the city's current combination is already in the range of other jurisdictions, therefore the Housing Element has already been met. That although there were two years of higher increases, it's trending back down more towards the norm. And nevertheless, the 5% ceiling did protect tenants while operating costs during those high inflation years was, was more than 5%. There was additional input about the interesting interaction between space rents and the value of mobile homes, and that if the AGA is too low, petitions might be filed leading to higher rents through the petition process, and that the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ordinance has higher fees than in other jurisdictions. So based on the input received and the analysis conducted, the Rental Housing Committee held a study session to, an item to discuss this on December the 12th of 2024. Three of the committee members deliberated, two members recused themselves. And the staff recommendation to the Rental Housing Committee was to lower the AGA from 100% CPI to 75% CPI based on the analysis of where most of the jurisdictions were landing and based on the input received, but to keep the floor of 2% and keep the floor, the ceiling at 5%. The RHC provided a different recommendation to council, which is to lower the AGA from 100% to 60% CPI, lower the floor from 2% to 0%, no, no floor, and maintain it a ceiling of 5%. Overall, the RHC favored greater, some greater protections for, for tenants, and noted that with regard to the ceiling, modifying the ceiling may not be necessary. If the CPI were lower, it would be difficult to hit the ceiling anyway at 5%. The RHC also expressed a desire to have more data around operating costs and financial returns, and it was noted that there was not the time to do an extensive analysis like that and to meet the Housing Element deadline. And it may not be able to, to yield the sort of desired information anyway through, through such a process. But what staff did do was analyze more inflation data and to see if there was research out there that could be applicable to this, this question, this topic. There was also a question of whether there could be two AGA standards used, and the determination was that there could be fair housing issues and it could be difficult to administer, so staff is not recommending two different AGA standards. Briefly, here is a summary of the additional data that was provided going all the way back to 1999. For many of the years, it is really within that 2% and 5% range. But if you take a look at the average over this period of time, about 26 years, at 100% CPI, it's about 2.9% on average, and at 75% CPIU, it's about 2.2%. The floor during this time, at 100% CPI, the 2% floor would have been hit seven times, 75% CPI would have hit the floor 11 times. However, regarding the ceiling, at 100% CPI, the 5% ceiling would have been hit only three times, and at 75% CPI, it would have not hit the 5% ceiling in any of the years. Regarding the literature review, there does appear to be a consensus that mobile home parks generally have lower operating costs than apartments and may have a higher return. And it seems that mobile home parks nationwide, nationwide has seen values increase. So although each mobile home park may be situated differently, it does appear to generally be an attractive real estate asset class, may have higher returns relative to apartments. So staff's recommendation to council, based on some additional analysis, especially including the additional inflation analysis, is to lower the AGA from 100% CPIU to 75% CPIU, same as what was recommended to the Rental Housing Committee, however, to lower the floor to 1% instead of maintaining the 2% floor as originally recommended, and to maintain a ceiling of 5%. Next steps, if council directs staff to make amendments to the MHRSO, we would be bringing back the ordinance for your consideration for first reading in March, March 13th, and then the second final hearing on March 25th to meet the Housing Element deadline. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Thanks very much.
Great, thank you. Does any member of the council have a question?
Councilmember McAllister?
Couple of questions. So in the, this chart that you gave us over the years, which was very helpful, and I appreciate that, the current, if we use the current mobile home park ordinance, everybody was, we stayed within the margins the whole time, pretty much, except for the, the blip of the 5% going up higher.
There were three years where at 100% CPI, it would have exceeded the 5% ceiling, and seven of the years would have gone through the, gone through the floor.
But overall, we were, we stayed within the, except for those two out of 26 years, we were pretty, it was pretty consistent, and one could figure out the averages were pretty consistent going.
Yeah, average, it's about 2.9%.
Yeah, okay. So one of the questions I had is if everything has been going through and nothing's really changed in the way of pricing, why are we exploring changing the pricing now from what the original council had decided on, if the numbers, again, across the board have been within the range in all this time?
The primary reason is this is now a Housing Element item, and we need to evaluate the programs under, under the Housing Element. So this is listed as one of the items, and there's a deadline to do so. And we mentioned the, the input that the city received during the Housing Element development process about concern over the two years of high inflation.
Okay, so the Housing Element and your own says to, to make sure that something is comparable, comparable, and you, and your report stated numerous times that this current ordinance was compatible across the board. So it said, look at it and for compatibility. Also in your ordinance, so that's correct?
That is correct. It does say comparable with or less than.
Yeah, so, okay. And you, and also, didn't it say in the ordinance that we were supposed to be looking for a fair rate of return, correct?
The ordinance does include general language in the purpose.
Okay, so we had a general thing in the ordinance, you had a general thing from the Housing Element. So I'm still trying to figure out if everything was pretty general and the numbers haven't changed much, what was objective information that you saw excluding just the two-year bump that was an exception that made you think we had to change the rules?
Yeah, thank you very much for that question. Ultimately, this is a policy decision for council, certainly. Some key data there was taking a look at the comparable jurisdictions where the majority of the jurisdictions are at 75% CPI or less, so that's one comparison point. And then we had the other summary charts for the ceiling and, and the floor.
Okay, so the use, okay, so didn't the Housing Element say comparable? It didn't say 100 or 75? It didn't give you any specific goal to reach? It was sort of broad as saying as long it was comparable that it would be there? Okay, thank you on that one. Did you look at the other aspect that I was looking at, when you're looking at CPI, and I asked about the cost of doing business for, business, the cost of insurance going up, the cost of rents going up, cost of labor is going up. So if you went down to a 1%, or energy is also a huge problem that's going, if you went down to 1% and the HRC hypothetically said you can only raise it 1%, but these costs are, as we see right now, inflation is doing a lot of prices up, then how does that relate to the, the ordinance where, say, try to get a fair rate of return? If 1%, that's all you're allowed, but all these other inflationary prices are going up?
The MHRSO does have another route to achieve higher rent increases through the petition process, the Maintenance of Net Operating Income. So that is another way, if the AGA is not providing that fair return, that is an option for park owners.
And how, what's involved when asking for a relief from that? Is it quite extensive and expensive?
I'll make a general comment and then see if Anki has, Ms. Menderson has anything else to add. Park owners would need to submit a petition to the city. The city's hearing officers then evaluates the information received. For a fair return petition, costs and operations and rents would be accounted for to see if the fair return has been met. And there are various sort of guidelines that go into reviewing these, these applications or these petitions. I'll turn it over to Ms. Menderson.
Yeah, I would like to add, it doesn't cost park owners anything to file a petition. What they do have to provide is their cost expenses and income of the base year, which is 2029, and the same information for the year in which they file a petition, and those two numbers will be compared by hearing officers to see if they made a fair rate of return.
Did you say year 2029 was the base?
29, 21.
Okay, I thought 29, I'm gone.
Sorry.
Wow, we're getting very, okay. Thank you on that one. I also noticed, I, one of the questions I asked was about the typical space rent, and I noticed four of the mobile home parks were fairly similar and two were more expensive than others. Was that something that you took in consideration, or does that just background information for you?
That would be more background information.
Okay. Let's see what I had in there. And the, was any consideration of part of the, the annual fees? Was that considered part, because you, you had a great, somebody asked a great question in here, and I was just following up on it, that all these other jurisdictions that you put in there were allowed to pass through except for one or two, two others, that they were able to pass through part of the fee, and Mountain View at $285 is not allowed to pass it up. And if I look at all these other fees, Mountain View is 10 times the amount of any other city. Was that any consideration when you were talking about putting in these ranges?
That wasn't directly part of the, the analysis. The focus was really on the, the AGA floor and ceiling.
And any part of your consideration, did you ever look at the units versus just the jurisdictions? You know how many, somebody might have 1,100, but Mountain View has 1,130 mobile home units, some has more. Was that ever a consideration, the number of units?
Yes, it's in the summary tables as well, there's a more detailed attachment that was provided.
Those are my questions for now, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Michelle Walter?
Yeah, I was going to ask the question about the reasonable rate of return in the petition as well. And so you've, you know, you've given a lot of information about that, and that's, that's very helpful. What are the kinds of things that is on the, can you talk a little bit about what the expenses would be and what the, for a, a mobile homeowner versus an apartment owner?
Sure, just at a high level, there would be some similar costs, but with apartment landlords probably having more costs because there's upkeep of the units themselves, whereas mobile home park owners primarily, it is the, the common space, any amenities, providing hookups to each of the units, but not necessarily taking care of the units themselves unless the park owner is, owns one of the units, and also maintaining the overall park and infrastructure. Those are, those are the key ones, and certain utilities and lighting up and powering up the, the common areas is part of that.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going back, back in time. When we did our outreach for, the initial outreach for the Housing Element, now, when we did the Housing Element outreach, we did a lot of outreach to different stakeholders and people who are impacted by the housing crisis. And did that outreach include mobile home park residents?
I don't have that off the, my fingertips, but I, I believe so. It was a very extensive process, and I can try to poke around to confirm if we're in between questions.
But I kind of know the answer because I know that they were involved, but I'm trying to ask questions so that you could have that answer to a former question of our colleagues. But in that outreach, in that outreach, what led to the creation of this Housing Element If you could answer that.
It is a very extensive process, and it was a process that was led by planning and community development, and we supported that process. It involved both meetings, I believe, you know, at council where public input was received. There was also interaction, coordination between staff and interested stakeholders and community members, and we'll verify to, but again, I believe that there were meetings with, with mobile home park residents, and getting a thumbs up from Mr. Brown. And through various channels, the programs across the entire Housing Element were refined and worked on really extensively, including Program 3.2 and including the, the mobile home item, which discussed when the, the date of this item could be completed by and what was driving the, the interest behind this item.
So to clarify, by the time we did stakeholder in, input on the Housing Element, mobile home parks were, were covered by a, a council rent stabilization program. So there was still, you were still getting input from mobile home residents about looking at lowering the, or exploring lowering the AGAs, is that correct?
Correct. The ordinance had already been passed and gone into effect. The first year AGA had already been established, and as the Housing Element was being finalized in 2023, then it was starting to proceed towards the second round of AGAs, which is the second year of the 5%.
So that would be a reasonable explanation on why we are taking this up now and why it was a Housing Element item?
Correct. That was the main reason for this, this being included in the Housing Element.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hicks?
So the park fees for this program are relatively high. Is that, are they, and I imagine that's Is that, are they, and I imagine that's for cost recovery for our work on the program. Is that worth reexploring in terms of, you know, is a lot of that setup cost? Or is it costs that is still incurred? Can you give me any background on that?
Yes, thank you. So the overall program budget is around $320,000, $330,000 a year to help oversee over 1,100 spaces. A key part of that is just staffing. And so there's one primary FTE assigned to that. And then there's a budget for legal counsel, funding for administrative costs, the hearing officers, collateral and producing information and education and outreach and whatnot. So the ideas have a very efficient overall program budget, but still being able to provide good service and information to the rental housing committee and to the public. Part of this is at $320,000 or so. Some of it is a math question in terms of there's 1,100 spaces to spread the costs over. The other thing that we tried to look at, but there was just not enough time is how other cities determine the fees that they have. How do they staff it? Is it partially absorbed in other ways? Is there other funding sources? Or is it existing staff who are maybe using part of their time and hours to help support that? Versus in Mountain View, we have staff who is supporting the program that's dedicated to it. So we don't know if other cities are necessarily set up as cost recovery, if there may be other resources that are helping to support overall program implementation. What we do know is ours is modeled after the CSFRA to be 100% cost recovery currently.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, not seeing any. We'll move on to public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. We'll display, I think we'll do two and a half minutes on the screen. We'll take in-person speakers first. Salo Londano, followed by Edie Keating, and then Alex Brown. And then we'll move on to virtual after that. Thank you.
Thank you, council. My name is Salo and I represent WMA, the Western Manufacturer Housing Communities Association. We work with mobile home park owners and managers in California doing advocacy, training, education, et cetera. In advance of this meeting, we sent each of you a letter to inform you of the inadequacies of the data that your staff used for their calculations in the staff report. In this letter, we listed the errors that were made and explained how these errors severely impact the conclusions and the recommendations that were made to you. In short, the errors amounted to a total of 14,963 spaces, which is 33% of the entire universe of 45,000 spaces that were analyzed by your staff. I should note that all of these mistakes were made in one direction only, towards portraying the ordinances of other jurisdictions as more strict than they actually are, or stating that a jurisdiction has an ordinance when in reality it does not. In fact, once the real numbers have been entered, the only honest conclusions that can be made are the following. Number one, Mountain View's AGA of 100% of CPI is within the range of CPIs used in comparable jurisdictions. 100% of CPI is a subsection with the most number of jurisdictions, making it the most common level of AGA throughout the entire region. Number two, Mountain's view floor of 2% falls squarely in the middle of the range of floors used in comparable jurisdictions. Number three, Mountain View's ceiling of 5% falls at the very bottom of the range of ceilings used in comparable jurisdictions. Over 75% of jurisdictions have a ceiling of 5% of above. I trust that as representatives of your constituents, you don't want to make important decisions about your community based on false or wrong information. We're pleased to provide the city with this data so that you can make better, more informed decisions. I trust that my letter was added to the agenda package, but in case it was not, I have brought copies, including links supporting all of this data. If anyone would like a copy, please let me know. On a different note, mobile home parks are essentially small, little cities. Park owners and community managers deal with many of the same challenges that you do when governing the operations of your city. Please keep this fact in mind as you make decisions which will impact the well-being of your community for decades to come. Your housing providers care about this community. They want to continue serving the residents and the city as partners, not adversaries. Please listen to their needs as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Edie Keating.
Hello. Making a change is always uncertain, but I think that lowering the AGA in Mountain View's MHRSO will be a beneficial change. For mobile homeowners, lowering the AGA will add to their financial security. I would suggest 60% of CPI because space rents were already high in 2021 when the MHRSO began, many years after 2016 when the CSFRA began. Of course, park owners will not support this change. But I would like to point out that any rent, that like any rent stabilization regulation, park owners have the right to petition for higher rents. Like many jurisdictions, the MHRSO uses the MNOI calculation to determine if park owners are getting a fair rate of return. It's in the ordinance that you passed. The MNOI calculation guarantees that park owner net income not only stays the same as in the MHRSO base year, but escalates each year by the CPI. Not by a fraction of the CPI, it will still escalate in the MNOI calculation by the full CPI. Park owners will still have this unchanged calculation to fall back on. It allows an additional rent increase over the AGA to be spread to all residents in the park if park owner income falls behind. So if park owners might petition for higher rents, will lowering the AGA work? Yes, they may not petition. They may not choose to disclose the incomes that they are earning. Or if a park owner does choose to petition for additional rent increase, in that situation, lower-income park residents can request relief from the additional rent increase only through a hardship petition. I think it'll all work out well with both pieces of that, with the reduced AGA, but the ability to use the MNOI calculation if needed. And then finally, the ability to request a hardship petition if you're lower income. It's like a perfect storm in a good way.
Thank you. Alex Brown.
Hi, friends. You've heard from me so many times on this. So I'm waiting for the timer. I wanted to spend my whole time. I'm not going to. I'm speaking my personal capacity as a resident of a mobile home park and a member of the Mountain View Mobile Home Alliance. But I just wanted to focus more on, the purpose of the housing element is to keep people housed, to keep, like, keep people, put people who are not currently in homes, in homes, to keep people who are there, who are on the edges, who might be displaced, who might be put out on the street or forced into situations that they would otherwise choose, keep them in their homes. And this item helps with that. I don't want to lose the sight of the people who are helped, the people who are on the edges, who are income constrained, who are at the limits of what they can afford in terms of their rent, who might have to make the decision, can I continue living here? And it is a matter of like a few, like $100 a year that can make that difference. And that is what they're faced with every year when they get a rent increase. And what I think is the city should favor those residents, to try to keep them, like the ones who are on the edges, in their homes. Do I want the parks to continue operating? Yeah, that's where people live. I'm very happy to see Frank here coming to support his residents, the people who he is keeping housed. That's what we're all here for. That's what we're doing. Talk about averages, talk about the numbers, talk about the finances is great. That is what the petition process is for, is to actually get the hard numbers for any given situation, to work out what is fair, what is equitable, what is the proper rate of return. That's why we have a process for it. We have great staff who are funded by the fees in order to try to keep people housed. That's what we're doing. I don't believe in numbers. Pretty sure they're just made up to scare us. Anyway, thank you. You'll hear plenty from my other community members, I'm sure.
Thank you. Frank Kalsick.
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Frank Kalsick. And the item before you this evening is to review the allowed rent increases provided in the current mobile home rent control ordinance. Staff prepared reports studying comparable jurisdictions and provided you with analysis. Regretfully, the information failed to compare many of the other aspects of the ordinance that impact rent increases. And just because it's challenging doesn't mean that it's not important. These include vacancy control and vacancy de-control, capital expenditure pastures and how they're administered, and the administration fee. We heard earlier about the administration fee and how it is extremely high relative in any other jurisdiction in the state. And to put it into perspective, the AGA, depending upon what the space rent is, this expense alone consumes approximately 1.5% to 2.5% of the AGA. So I do appreciate the concerns of residents talking about AGA that is not received on our end. There's a large subtraction before we get there. The CPI measures the cost of goods and services from one year to the next. It reports the inflation that all of us feel when we go to the grocery store, call the plumber, or go out to eat. Park owners do not have a magic button that we can push that makes it a smaller than inflation rate. My point is that further disconnecting rents from the realities of the local economy or the federal economy by a policy, by a policy rather, that utilizes a percentage of CPI, is not sustainable. And I would think we would all agree that sustainability is critical in preserving affordable housing opportunities such as mobile homes. Sustaining affordable housing opportunities is also a declared goal of the housing element. And lastly, I'd like to address the belief that the simple fix for community owners is to file a petition for an upward adjustment. The reality is a petition is not a simple document to prepare. The process itself is disruptive in so many ways. Petitions are unpredictable as to timing and impact on residents. Petitions are costly to prepare and due to the complexity, consume a lot of staff time. There's no winners and losers in lowering the AGA and only to be assessed a significant increase catch up under the petition.
Thank you. Sally Lieber.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's good to see you all. And I'm hoping that you will adopt the most protective form possible of this item. Someone mentioned that the goal of the housing element should be to keep people housed here in Mountain View, to allow our neighbors to continue to be here and to work those essential jobs that we must have in Mountain View. By and large, the parks that are in Mountain View have been owned by the same families for a very, very long time. And as was mentioned by Ms. Keating, you know, this item has been kicked down the road for a long time and people have really paid a pretty penny to stay in Mountain View. And so I'm hoping that you'll do everything in your power to make sure that this is still an affordable, good form of housing. Mr. Kalsick, who I've known for literally decades, as well as his father, have been really responsible landlords here in Mountain View. And I wish that we could say the same of every single park that's out there. But we must keep this form of affordable housing to have people here. I do dip into those online forums and I see people talking about things like the Walgreens pharmacy that El Camino Hospital sends everybody who's discharged to, not having their pharmacy overnight anymore. We're seeing the impact of working people having to leave this entire area in many different ways in our community. So I hope that you can take protective steps to keep this last, really good, high-quality, safe form of housing out there for the people who are in it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our virtual public comment. First is Bruce England.
Thank you, mayor. Bruce England, Wisman Station Drive again. I'll be very brief. I want to echo Sally Lieber's comments really, that we have this form of affordable housing, with housing being a huge challenge for a lot of people in our community. And we value diversity, as you all know. And having appropriate, adequate, affordable housing for everybody at all levels is crucial and important. So this is a very complicated topic, at least it is to me. And the recommendations that came from the RHC look reasonably good to me. And the Mobile Home Alliance recommendation that goes somewhat beyond that seems even better. And given that those are the people who live in those homes and the mobile home communities, I tend to side with them in their interpretation of what they need in order to live and stay and thrive in Mountain View. So I'm asking for their recommendations to be given special attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Clancy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Molly Clancy. I've been living in Moore Park Mobile Homes for 10 years. Thanks staff for your work on this and thanks council for listening to us. I have just two points to make. The first is mobile home residents, we're nothing like apartment renters. Apartment renters pay their rent utilities. We pay rent utilities, mortgage, insurance, property taxes, and maintenance. If I rent an apartment, I have an issue, I fill out a ticket, I go to work, I come back and it's fixed. But since I'm a mobile home resident, recently I woke up and I smelled gas. So I had to take the day off and I had to call PG&E and they had to confirm the leak and turn the gas off. And I had to call around the companies and then that they repair the gas line, someone finally came, it wasn't repairable and they had to replace the gas line. And yeah, I was out $7,000. So, you know, a new roof, you know, that's going to cost $14,000. Like, these are considerable expenses that an apartment landlord is responsible for, but not a mobile home park landlord. And the staff report outlines that mobile home parks are considerably more profitable versus apartments because they don't have to pay for the maintenance of these homes. And other areas use a fraction of CPI because mobile home parks, the mobile home park landlords, they don't have all of their costs increase with inflation. They have a fixed mortgage or no mortgage. Their property taxes are rent-controlled by Prop 13, zero floor, 2% ceiling. And they don't pay for the maintenance of the homes. We do. So the Mountain View website says that mobile homes are a vital source of affordable housing in Mountain View. Please help in keeping that promise. Overall, our situation is nothing like apartments and thus we need different, more robust protections. My second point is very short. I urge city council, please listen to your expert advisory battery, this RHC, and adopt their recommendation. That's what they're there for. And yeah, please listen to the RHC and thank you.
Thank you. Phone number ending in 872, if you could unmute.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, council. Thank you so much for considering changes to the ordinance tonight. A little bit about me, I'm a senior. I've been renting my mobile home from my park owner for close to 25 years. And over that time, my rent has more than quadrupled. So I'm hoping you can modify the current rent control model and change the AGA to 60% of CPI, implement a 3% cap ceiling, and eliminate the floor as so many communities have done. These changes are so critical in a city like Mountain View, which according to the Mercury News already has some of the highest rents in the country. News, already has some of the highest rents in the country. An owner's space rent of $2,100 balloons to almost $5,600 in 20 years at 5%. A renter's home rent of $4,000 balloons to almost $11,000 in 20 years at 5%. Clearly, this is not sustainable. Just over the last couple of months, two families in my park have been forced to leave their homes because they can't pay the escalating rents. The housing element stipulates that the city must look at the ordinance and make sure rent increases are consistent with or less than comparable jurisdictions. And this goes to the questions that John was asking. Look at staff's report. 88% of the mobile homes covered by staff's report have AGAs lower than Mountain View. 71% of the jurisdictions have AGAs lower than Mountain View. Almost 1 in 3 mobile homes have AGAs pegged at 60% or less. 86% of the jurisdictions have no floor. And almost 1 in 3 jurisdictions and 1 in 3 mobile homes have caps lower than Mountain View's current cap of 5%. And against that backdrop, you have park owners that have property taxes capped at 2%, resident base rents that were set six years after apartment base rents, and park owners that have a built-in safety valve in the ordinance if they feel their park--
Thank you, Chris. Sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Phone ending in 023. Please unmute. Did they?
Hello, I'm--
Yep, we got you.
Okay. Well, my name is Bonnie, and I'm just amazed at all these conversations that have been going on. Anyway, I've lived in the Moore Park Mobile Home Park for 26 years this year. I'm 77 years old, senior, on a very meager fixed income. Over time, the increases would compound to a rent that is absurdly high and would result in displacement for myself. It is very important that I continue to live in the Bay Area, and since I've been here since 1966. But I need to stay in my home because my mother, who is in a skilled nursing facility, is in Sunnyvale. So I can't move. I mean, that's impossible. I would also like to reiterate, and I say this because I don't think anybody understands when you're a senior, that seniors are only receiving this year 2.5% for Social Security's cost of living. We don't even know what's going to happen next year because of the new administration in Washington, DC. We have no clue. It could be worse. I doubt it'll be better. That barely covers groceries, not to mention expenses for medical and dental bills and everyday needs on top of home maintenance. Home maintenance is very expensive. My plea is to adopt the RHC's recommendations and preserve this important, affordable housing in Mountain View. I love Mountain View. I moved here for a reason. Thank you for your important consideration in this matter. And I hope this goes forward in a positive way for all of those who enjoy a mobile home life. I stand back. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Davis.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Barbara, and I've been living at Santiago Villa Mobile Home Park for nine years. I also work full-time at a law firm in downtown Mountain View. First and foremost, thank you for your time and consideration tonight. I really appreciate your dedication to making Mountain View a wonderful place to live and work. I've been in front of this council and/or the RHC several times over the last nine years, asking for rent control for mobile homes. While we did get some protection years ago, it's not enough. My space rent is currently $2,271.46 a month, and I pay separately from my own water, sewer, gas, electric, and trash. I am expecting another rent increase of 2.4% to come at the beginning of February, as my yearly renewal is coming up. I also pay a mortgage on top of this, not to mention maintenance on my home, like gutter cleaning, pest control, tree trimming, landscaping, exterior, interior painting, and other maintenance costs. In the past three years alone, my space rent has gone up 12.4%, soon to be 14.6%. And these big increases, year after year, are way too much. As far as park owners are concerned, I understand that they want to make returns on their investments. Of course, that's why they're in business, I get that. However, why should park owners receive an automatic guaranteed 1%, 2%, 5% increase year after year? As a renter, I'm not getting any special amenities or accommodations for paying that much more in my rent. Not to mention, if park owners want to increase rents even higher, they have a petition process in place for such increases. You know, I'm getting old, and I'm getting scared to death of losing my home. And I'm desperately asking you to take staff's recommendation one step further and give us 60% of the CPI with a 3% ceiling and no floor, which is only fair. It's the right thing to do, it's also the morally right thing to do. So please, put people ahead of profits and do the right thing, Mountain View. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Bea.
Good evening, council.
Hi, Bea.
Mobile home park owners have told you that Mountain View's mobile home ordinance has protected and served their Mountain View's renters well. Without consulting their residents, they've claimed that MHRSO has balanced the needs of both residents and park owners. Mobile home park residents don't agree. Despite what you're hearing from park owners, we do not understand that it takes a significant investment to manage and administer the parks. Many of us even like our managers and appreciate the fact that Mountain View's mobile home parks are generally very nice places to live. But we also know that maintaining the streets and amenities is expensive, and the parks' employees who are doing the administration and providing security should be well-paid for the great work they are doing. We expect our rents to be used for these purposes, and we also feel that park owners should be fairly compensated for their investments. But we've also reviewed the high rents in the rent registry and calculated that some owners might be making windfall profits from the parks. In short, we don't feel that the expenses of residents and the compensation of park owners are fairly balanced. If the MHRSO amendments we're hoping for pass council tonight, and the owners file hardship petitions if they need more revenue, and they agree to be transparent about their expenditures to the RHC, one of the results would be a friendlier and more open relationship with residents. Wouldn't that be great? The Mobile Home Alliance is respectfully requesting that you implement the Rental Housing Committee's recommendation to amend our MHRSO. Thank you for considering our request.
Thank you. Anna Marie Morales.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you to staff and city council. I really appreciate you all. I have lived in Mountain View for over 40 years. I deeply love our beautiful city. Over time, I've seen many of my neighbors and friends displaced. I've personally come close to facing the same fate after a serious car accident. These amended protections are critical, particularly for people like my mom. She is a disabled senior on a fixed income. She has been in and out of the hospital and skilled nursing facilities for the past five years. Her needs and cost of care has greatly increased, and we both worry about these increases. And what if something happens where it goes below, like, 0%? I know that's something that hasn't really happened, but it could. Who knows what's going to happen with this new administration? There are serious fears with that. It's really essential that we both stay close to our support systems. We're both disabled. We rely on our neighbors and family and friends that we've spent decades and decades forming to, for our well-being. Mobile home residents and our allies have worked tirelessly to highlight the need for amending the MHRSO. And we are grateful that HCD recognized the issue by including us in the housing element. Through multiple stakeholder meetings, our community overwhelmingly voiced why these protections are not just necessary but vital. To ensure compliance with the housing element, decisive action must be taken to safeguard mobile home residents. I urge you to please adopt RHC's recommendation. And park owners already have access to financial relief mechanism within the ordinance, allowing them to seek adjustments if they so feel neither profits are insufficient. So I really appreciate you all taking this effort up and supporting us as much as you can. Please take action tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alex Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor Kamey, and council members. My name is Alex Nunez. I'm speaking tonight on my individual capacity. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I came and supported the recommendation, or more importantly, actually, my neighbors and, you know, fellow residents who live in mobile home parks, who own their mobile homes and rent the spaces. You know, as everyone is saying, there are so many reasons why, you know, these rental protections are important to them who are living in these mobile home parks. And, you know, for all of these reasons individually, but also just collectively, in terms of, you know, our residents and putting them first, I just want to make sure that, you know, I commend firstly council for actually, you know, having this ordinance in place in the first place, right? You know, thanks to most of you, you know, who were there, and even, you know, prior to that, kind of setting in motion the ability for our mobile home residents to have these protections in place. You know, this has really been instrumental in establishing a little bit more economic security for some of our most vulnerable residents, but, you know, also some of our growing residents, right, who are establishing families, residency in our community, contributing, you know, in the prime of their, you know, working years and to our economy, right? So we, you know, really need to have this kind of like broad range of, not just affordability, but of, you know, people of all incomes and kind of like stratification to be able to, you know, for us to have a sustainable, you know, and long-term economic vitality in Mountain View. And so with that kind of like long-term view, you know, I'm definitely encouraged by how many people are coming out, also encouraged by, you know, the demonstrated previous actions of, you know, our Mountain View City Council. And I really both urge and hope that, you know, we're looking at this issue with a way towards kind of like progressing and strengthening outcomes for our residents. So that is my ask, and I really value everyone's time and attention, and also hope the best for everyone living in these residencies. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we have one last in-person speaker, Mark Christiansen.
Yeah, I'll make it brief. The people that I've heard speaking already have covered the majority of my points, but just briefly, I've lived in this valley my entire life. I moved to Mountain View in '86, rented for a couple of years, and bought a mobile home in 1988. Even though I was working at Lockheed, I didn't really have enough income to afford to buy a house. It was about $400 difference between getting a mobile and getting a house, and it just wasn't really tenable. But I really don't want to have to leave this area. And given the options for living, there's nothing else that's really affordable. So I just want you to continue to protect the rights of mobile home residents here, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any more hands virtually and no other speakers in person, so I will bring this item back to council for deliberation and action. First, I have Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like it's a full-circle moment. This is the first time mobile home parks really came before us when I was here on council. I've seen it through so many different lenses. I was sitting in that corner over there in 2016 when the mobile home park residents first came asking for protections. I was sitting here, but not on this body, when decisions were made regarding those protections. I remember seeing when the input about the housing element and when they finally got protections. It was a long journey. And it's always nice to see the same people still fighting for their neighbors and for themselves. I think about the long history we've had with this policy and the various asks of it. I know that there is a staff recommendation, and what the staff is asking us to do, just to be very clear on what our motions are, is to direct staff to come back with a resolution. And it goes back to, there were some hard knocks in getting protections for the mobile home parks, but it does provide this opportunity that we have. If we wanted to change the AGA for our entire rent control system, we would have to go through the voters. Now, we don't have to. It's going to be in our, it's in our hands right now. And thinking through the history of that fight, thinking through the history of what our mobile home residents are pushing for, I am inclined to support what the mobile home residents are asking for in their stakeholder feedback. And so I am in support of getting a 60% CPI for our AGA with a, I'm not going to say no floor, I'm going to say a 0% floor, because apparently Novato has like negative CPI implications, which is crazy to me. Like, if CPI goes negative, they actually have to lower, they have to decrease their rent, which is, only one jurisdiction has that. So like a 0% floor and a 3% ceiling, which is what the mobile home residents are asking for. And I also, I will also say, I'm glad that Mr. Kelcik is here. Out of all the mobile home park residents, you are probably the most beloved of your tenants. I think that's something to be very proud of. I would love to know more, how to decrease more barriers to the petition process. That was something in a previous board we were handling. And I think what we wanted to do was make sure that the barriers to that petition process were removed, so that when you actually have the need to increase your rent beyond what the set AGAs are, we had a mechanism for it. Legally, we actually have to have a mechanism for it. That's why the fair rate of return standard is. So I would love either for us to look into that, or maybe just direct the RHC to look into that, to explore if there are additional barriers-- into that, to explore if there are additional barriers to that petition process. That's something I'm very open to. And I actually will make that motion if there is, if there's some adjustments, we can hear them, but I am looking at what our residents are asking us to do. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So it looks like we have a motion for the 60% CPI AGA, the 0% floor, the 3% ceiling by Vice Mayor Ramos, that was seconded by Councilmember Showalter. There's many hands, I'm going to continue so we can have the discussion before calling the vote. Councilmember Hicks.
Well, I wasn't expecting to speak with a motion already on the floor, but I will speak to the motion. So I just wanted to underline that mobile homes are really a major portion of our affordable housing. I think one in every 30 units of housing in the city, but a much larger portion of our naturally affordable housing, who knows, maybe a majority of it. And I would just, I think the main thing on my mind right now is that I would just hate to lose that in the way we did, I think, most if not all of council was around during the Rock Street situation, when many of our residents were, low-income residents were displaced, and there, council felt there was nothing they could do about it. I don't want to have that in reverse, where there's something we could have done about it today, and then, you know, major numbers, particularly seniors, are displaced. I don't want to put ourselves in that situation. Well, we're not putting ourselves, we're putting the residents of the housing in that situation. Of course, it's important to me that there be a fair rate of return at the same time, but it sounds to me like there are processes for that. I would support, I don't know if it was part of your motion, to look at barriers to the petition process. Was that a part of your motion? Okay, it was.
It can be.
Well, the secondor thought it was. She's.
Yeah, I thought it was. Let's go.
Just, and sorry, let me just clarify. It wasn't included as part of the area of study of the housing element, but it can be included, correct? Just looking.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. So my understanding was the housing element was only looking at those three buckets, but now we're adding something else in as a recommendation, and we can do that. I just wanted to double-check before we start going down that path where people think that, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be clear. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So, yeah, and I like, I feel like, well, I'm not, I've said enough. We have a motion on the floor, which it looks like I will be supporting.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. So I'll start with a bit of history. After the, after the RHC decided that the CSFRA didn't apply to mobile homes, in my, the final year of my term, I believe, my previous term, I supported expand, you know, extending rent control to mobile homes. I thought it was important that they were included in doing that by ordinance, and I felt that it should, at least to start, should generally be modeled after the CSFRA, so that, you know, since we were charging the RHC with administering it, that things were, you know, as aligned as possible. I didn't get to vote on the final ordinance, but I'm glad it's in place, and I think it's worked relatively well. I also agreed, when I was on EPC, to, you know, include this in the housing element as, you know, a few years in, as a way for us to, one, revisit, because it was an ordinance, and as Vice Mayor pointed out, it's something that we can adjust over time, to make sure, one, that, you know, it's working as intended, and two, to take another look at comparable jurisdictions and see, you know, where we land with respect to, with respect to our ordinance and other jurisdictions, and then if appropriate, as part of the housing element item, make adjustments here in the next few months. So I supported all that. I also believe that this should be, for those who've watched me, they know that I value good policymaking. I believe that when you sit on an elected body, you're elected to be a sound policymaker, and you kind of take off your advocacy hat and you put on your policymaking hat. And in our case, we do have, we have mobile home residents, we have residents throughout the city who are in mobile homes or not in mobile homes, we have business owners, we have park owners, we have landlords, all of whom I think we need to strive to maintain, to maintain a balance. And I think what I'm getting at is, I am, I am open to adjustments to the AGA. What I don't want to do is go so low that, I've heard a number of folks say, well, MNOI is the, that's the relief valve, and I think, and while that is somewhat true, I think it's our job to set the parameters such that we shouldn't have, it shouldn't be so high that it doesn't provide the protections that we want for our mobile home residents. It shouldn't be so low that every single park owner has to, is filing MNOI, is to try and create a balance that we failed to strike in looking at the data. And so tonight, what I'm trying to do is look at all the data, hear everyone's perspective, and try and strike a balance so that we're in a world where everyone has additional certainty. Because I fear what, with MNOI, those are unpredictable adjustments, and they're permanent. And so what I don't want to do is create more uncertainty for our mobile home park residents because we set AGA, or didn't set AGA, we set a percentage of AGA such that, you know, everyone is, has to file an MNOI in order to get back to wherever the balance is. I think that creates too much uncertainty, and it's an onerous process, and frankly, it's before a political body. And, and we've seen with the recusals, this recommendation was made to us by two members of the RHC, which I understand why that is the case, but I think that is less representative of, of, you know, the overall RHC makeup, or perhaps by necessity. So I think what I'm getting at is, you know, I don't, I don't want to be less friendly to our residents than the majority of jurisdictions. We received updated data over the weekend and today, and I've put all that together. And so I think, and I also bring the perspective of, you know, sitting on an HOA board, which doesn't, you know, raises fees to pay for common areas and utilities and insurance and all these other things, and it isn't apples-to-apples with the mobile home park, but I can't remember a time where we were, and we don't make a profit, we're just trying to pay the bills. Those increases has all been 5% to 10%, in some cases even more, just to keep up with insurance and utilities and all the things that go up more than AGA. And so I just, I want to make sure that we're crafting this in a way that we want to provide a fair rate of return, not force someone to prove us wrong and set it so low that these petitions come in and create uncertainty. So I think if, what I would be open to is looking at this holistically, and we can lower, we can change the percentage from 100% to a lower percentage of AGA, we can change the floor, but I want to look at it in the perspective of also the fees, which we are the highest, I think, any jurisdiction on this entire list, significantly higher, and we don't allow any of that cost to be passed through to residents even 50/50 or 75, or, you know, 25/75. I think a big part of this is vacancy control, that at least in apartments, whether you agree with vacancy control or not, it does create the ability to kind of reset things and, and basically, the folks who move in are kind of subsidizing the folks who are already there in that case. But I do think that that is a key part of it, and I'm not saying we should get rid of it, I just think it's something that we need to consider as we look at all this. And then I think the final thing is, is perhaps some sort of appeals process for MNOI. I think that ultimately, you know, if someone disagrees with an RHC ruling on something, especially if it's two members or a subset of the body, perhaps that should go to an elected body for final resolution. So I feel less strongly about the latter, but I do really feel like if we're going to bring something back, we need to also look at the program fees and how those are distributed, and we need to at least factor in vacancy control. I'm not suggesting we get rid of that, I just think it's a factor here. So with that said, I won't be supporting the motion that's on the floor. I would be open to a different path forward, where we look at this a little bit more comprehensively, and maybe we still do a percentage of AGA and we adjust the floor. I just want to make sure we're also addressing the program fees and we're really creating a sustainable model here, because I think even if we were to do nothing tonight, I think we've satisfied what we set out to do with the housing element, which was to compare this with other jurisdictions, and I think what we found with the latest data from the last 24, 48 hours is that we are well within, if not below, when you factor in the fees and all the other things that the park owners are paying compared to other jurisdictions, that we're well within kind of the goal that we set for the housing element.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate many of the comments provided by all of my colleagues, but to Councilmember Clark in particular, because I too was going to go back in time and reflect on the history, but going back a little bit further than you did. I remember the October 2015 study session, which was agendized in response to significant community input during a series of council meetings about the impact of escalating rents, evictions without cause, and other similar challenging housing stories. And the council had not been anticipating that comment, and agendized that study session in part to take significant stakeholder input and then see if there was a path forward that can address the interests of all of the stakeholders. And what came out of that study session was insufficient from the perspective of the tenants and the tenant advocates who then went and placed what became Measure V on the ballot, charter amendment that the voters approved. Consequently, we have in our charter a fairly robust rent stabilization program. And I think the, you know, I supported Measure V. I do believe that rent stabilization is an important policy solution to the challenge of escalating rents when restrictive land use regulations impede the production of housing, which I think ultimately is the real solution to the crisis, but in the absence of that as a shorter, medium-term solution, rent stabilization has a role in protecting folks and helping people remain in our community. The moral of that story is we ignore the, we ignore our residents at our own peril. Following that, there was a decision to interpret the CSFRA in such a way that mobile homes were not included. And I don't need to opine on the merit of that discussion. It was a decision that a regulatory body made, and that became the law of the land, and that was affirmed by the courts. And so as Councilmember Clark had indicated, that led to a council decision to prioritize placing or creating an ordinance that protects mobile home owners and renters, which I agree was, I think, the right thing to do. And I think modeling it after the CSFRA was a good foundation. It's hard. The decisions I struggle with most are beyond picking between people, picking the correct number. It feels like an, it's a challenging exercise, because you can argue for any particular number, it feels arbitrary to me. But then following that, our residents were very clever and participated in the housing element process, and were successful in helping persuade HCD to reject our first draft, leading to a scramble, I think, to try and understand what we needed to do to get a compliant and ultimately certified housing element, which we did. And I found the letter dated May 26, 2023, which includes the following, this is from HCD, so congratulations, you're certified. "We expect you to do these things. Additionally," I'm quoting now, "the city must continue timely and effective implementation of all programs, including but not limited to the following," and it calls out several programs, and one of them is Program 3.2. "This program commits to the city, commits the city to carrying out numerous actions in the planning period to prevent and/or mitigate displacement of households, including those in mobile homes, prevent the loss of naturally occurring affordable units, and conserve and improve existing affordable housing stock." And I think if, nothing else, I hope we've all learned to take the housing element process very seriously. A lot of cities that did not take it seriously are having to make a lot of really tough decisions, and we're subject to that as well, and that'll be a series of different conversations by the council later. But I think the moral of that story is we ignore our residents at our own peril. So having said that, I think we need to take action. I don't believe that we can justify saying, well, after review, everything looks good. It's in line, it's comparable, but those are undefined in our housing element, but I think the commitment in including that program, and then the letter from HCD itself suggests very strongly that this is a program that is important to HCD because it's important to the stakeholder groups that helped torpedo our initial draft, and then consequently helped us get our subsequent drafts certified, because after inclusion of that program, they then advocated to HCD saying, now is the time to certify, which HCD did. So I don't know what the right numbers are. It's hard for me internally to justify any one particular number over another, but I do greatly appreciate the analysis that staff provided in the report. And then I appreciated your response to the question I asked, requesting additional analysis based on the letter that we received from, I can't remember the, from Saulo, I think it was, and there's a significant discussion, point by point, affirming or rejecting some of the points made in that letter, but this is helpful. I think what it tells me is we've made a good faith effort to try and understand what jurisdictions throughout the Bay Area, and maybe even outside of the Bay Area, I didn't investigate every jurisdiction specifically, but I think most of these are within the Bay Area, what they're doing and how our ordinance compares and contrasts with that. So all accept that analysis and, you know, agree that, you know, while maybe elements of our program are comparable, there are some things that could be improved to help provide greater stability for the residents who we're intending to protect with this ordinance. So I do have some suggested amendments, in part because I agree very strongly with Councilmember Clark. I think that we should reduce the fee pretty significantly, and the arbitrary number I'm going to recommend is $151. And the reason I'm picking that number is because it's 53% of the fee, and staff provided a very helpful analysis of the budget, item 80 here, and it says 53% of the budget is for staffing. That's why I picked the $151. I am open to suggestions on what, you know, a better or more appropriate fee might be, but that's a substantial reduction from the current fee, which is $285. So it doesn't get us down to where other jurisdictions are, which are in the $14 to $36 range, but I feel like it would be hard to go below the amount we would it would be hard to go below the amount we would need to maintain staffing without significant subsidy from the general fund, which I would support, but that's a conversation that we may not need to have. I'll talk about that a different time. So my request would be for the maker of the motion and the secondor to include a reduction to the fee, and I would throw out, at least as a suggestion, a reduction from $285 to $151.
Okay. One concern I do have on that, and I actually do agree in concept that there, we should find ways to lower this fee. I don't want to defund our rent stabilization program for mobile home park residents. So I don't know if this is a conversation for another time. I want to make sure that it remains running.
So that we all slightly amend it by saying we retain the budget but reduce the fee, and then have staff return with some path forward to retaining the budget as it is. So the service is not reduced.
So is the maker of the motion comfortable with adding that amendment?
I have, hmm.
Okay. Well, we can come, we can come back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there more, Councilmember?
One last, thank you, Mayor. I do hope you consider that. The last thing I'll share is I did want to confirm, this pertains to the, this does not pertain, this direction, to the vacancy control provision, which remains at simply AGA, right? As I understand it, the vacancy control provision has neither a floor nor a ceiling. And if we said, if we amended the program to say 60% of CPI, that would not apply to the vacancy control provision.
I'm going to look to staff.
Yes, we will make sure in the ordinance that that keeps being the 100% CPI, if that's what you're indicating.
So that's staff's understanding, and I guess I'm checking with the maker of the motion to see if you were intending to apply to both numbers, the 60% CPI.
Does staff have more to add?
No, I just wanted to make sure that I understand that you want to keep the vacancy control at 100%.
I think he's asking the question.
Yeah. What we're discussing right now is just the AGA, and it's not talking about how AGA is applied to the vacancy control, which would remain the same unless council had a direction on that.
Okay. Thank you. So I hope that provides also some comfort to you, Councilmember Clark, and others who have substantially similar concerns that the vacancy control is actually, would remain comparatively more generous, I guess, based on the direction and the motion on the floor. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McAllister.
I have a question, and I should have asked maybe Mr. Brown, but I'll ask you guys. If these AGIs are comparable, why isn't apartments going down to these numbers? What makes this numbers different than an apartment number? And why haven't they come along? They voted it to go down, so why haven't they done that for apartments?
The scope of the study is focused specifically on the mobile home rent ordinance. And in the input that we've heard in the review, it seems like mobile home parks may have lower costs, apartments may have higher costs, which may need a higher AGA. But the main focus of the housing element is focused on the MHRSO.
Well, I understand it, but why aren't they saying, hey, you know, we're looking at mobile homes, maybe the apartments should have a lower AGI also?
Yeah, that's not something that I would be able to comment about why folks may not be coming out for this particular item.
Okay. It was just curiosity on this particular part I asked, that one. Did Councilmember Clark have a proposed motion that he might be thinking about?
So I think there's a motion on the floor, and I didn't hear a substitute motion from Councilmember Clark.
Well, I'm getting to that. Just give us time.
Oh, okay.
Oh, were you thinking about that? Oh, did you want to make it now, or did you consider it?
I'd like to hear from the rest of my colleagues.
Okay. Well, then I would.
Before I even decide whether to do that.
Okay. I could, I will not support the motion on the floor right now. I am really glad, along with Councilmember Clark, that the ordinance was put in place for mobile homes. I supported that idea from the get-go. I felt it was reasonable and fair to make the city, you know, just for all people around. So, but the percentage here is, doesn't seem a sustainable amount that I've seen in my small time as a business owner. But I did have another question for staff. Did you see a lot of, has there been a lot of movement in parks, people coming and going? What is the number of people in the park that change its hands? Is it 10% movement, 25? Do you have an idea?
I'm going to ask Ms. Anderson to see if she has any input from the database.
No, we currently don't have the exact data for that.
Okay. So we're hearing people say, oh, we're going to move, but we don't know what kind of movement there is. There could be a lot, or there could be little. We're assuming things, correct? Okay. I'm also concerned that there are a lot of assumptions by staff. Well, mobile home parks appear to be more profitable than apartments. There's more this or more of that. There was one comment that the staff had that was interesting to me, that it said something about an economic analysis need to really get an understanding of what's going on, is you need an economic analysis for, yeah, an economic analysis would have required a consultant, would have taken longer time. So in a sense, we are sort of rushing this along without full data. To Councilmember Clark's point is, the data should support what we're doing, and then we don't want to make mistakes. I think that we can make a fair representation to both sides with adjustments, but 60 and 0, I don't see that as a realistic, sustainable number for a mobile home park to do. They, you know, in a sense, I get, and I haven't been around, and you guys have been more involved in this than I have, but I see one bad apple is going to be causing everybody else's to sustain the effect of whatever we decide on. And I don't think that's fair either. So I would be open to a higher, well, not the 100%, but something maybe along with staff recommended, that's 75, the floor, the ceiling at 5, and the floor at 2, because there are expenses that are going on all the time. And we need to make sure that the quality of the parks, and people mentioned that parks in Mountain View are very well maintained, yet I would talk, when I was talking with staff earlier about apartments, they say some of the apartments are not as well maintained, and there's concern there. So we need to find that fine balance between the two so that the pricing, the rent is reasonable, the parks are well maintained and able to continue. So I am open to Councilmember Clark when he has an opportunity.
Councilmember Cheryl Walter.
Wanted to say that based on what I've heard, the thing, and my thoughts, I think the thing that really matters that we do is that we come up with a percentage of the CPI that we're going to reduce the, so that the AGA is reduced. Because for mobile home parks, it's really fundamentally different. In an apartment, you just pay your rent. And in, you know, in a mobile home park, you pay your ground rent, and you either pay your mortgage, or you pay your rent on the, you know, on the mobile home itself. So it's really quite different. And so that is what really fundamentally, I think, matters to me, is that we do reduce this AGA, and we can, you know, we can change what the amount is. But I think that's really, really important to do that, because it's not a similar thing. It's like they're paying, you know, two rents in a sense. At the same time, I wasn't aware, somehow that these fees didn't hit me until tonight on the, on the dais. And I do think the idea of reducing the fees or investigating the fees being reduced is also really expensive. So I just, I mean, really a good idea. So I, I mean, we shouldn't be having fees that are so much out of line with everyone else's. On the other hand, you know, our concept is that this was cost recovery. And sometimes that's, you know, when you do the equation for a concept you had at the beginning, you find out, well, that was a good concept, but when you look at how it works out, it doesn't work out real well. And I think that's what we're seeing here, is that it's, you know, it's, yes, it's a good concept, but it's not really working out very well. And it's creating sort of an unfair situation. So I think that we should be thinking about reducing the fee and/or saying some of it can be passed through. But, but the thing I care the most about is just making sure that the AGA does get reduced and that we come up with a percentage. So I just wanted to share that.
Great. Thank you. So I see Councilmember Clark in the queue, and before I go to him, I'm just going to just add in, if that's all right. So I think we've heard the long history, but I just wanted to say thank you to staff. I know that they have tried really hard to include the metrics, comparable data. I know for myself, I was, wanted to know more of the survey results in terms of, okay, what percentage of the respondents fall into this category or that, just so I can get a better sense of those we're trying to serve. I want to thank the community and for coming and talking about this again. I feel like it's been like a really long journey. I know it's over two decades that you've been working on this. And so I know it takes a lot of persistence to continue this conversation. And I want to thank our park owners. I know that the majority are family-run and have been in Mountain View for many decades. And the majority really are good actors in the city. So it's, I know that we're talking about this again, two years later. I think some of the challenges are being discussed here on the dais. And so I'll wait until I see what, you know, the final motion is going to be. But I do think both protecting and preserving are things that the council's talked about. I've been supportive of. And I think we're also talking about, you know, appreciate the discussion of the petition process, the appeals, the fees, vacancy control. I know that our deadline per the program for the housing element, I think, is March 31st. But I would have been inclined to be able to take more of a comprehensive look, as Councilmember Clark was saying, just so we could tackle even more and find more there to do. But I'll turn it over to Councilmember Clark for his, oh, no, you just spoke. So Councilmember Clark, right? Okay, no problem.
Yeah. And thank you for your comments, Mayor, and Councilmember Cheryl Walter, too. I appreciate hearing from all my colleagues. I think, so this is slightly uncomfortable for me in terms of where I came into this meeting on. But I, putting on my policymaker hat again, there are two things that I think are really important. One is staff has studied this at great length from the time that the ordinance was put in place and also the time that we adopted this housing element action, and made a recommendation to the RHC. The RHC went in a different direction, I should say, two members of the RHC went in a different direction. Staff took that, you know, that kind of direction into account when they provided an updated recommendation to us. And I, I think it is, I think it is, I think we need to think about the precedent here in terms of rejecting two different staff recommendations that I think were well thought out in both cases. One. And two, I want to keep an eye toward the future, both what HCD is going to look at here, and keep in mind that in a couple of years, we will have three new council members. And this is an ordinance, has been pointed out, and can change from time to time. What I, what I don't want to do is adopt something now on like a four to three or a five to two vote that could potentially be modified and create more uncertainty two or three years from now. I would much rather have something close to a unanimous council vote that sends a message to ACD that we're committed to whatever actions we take tonight, long term, and to the community, to our mobile home residents who know that, you know, there's conviction behind not just the current council, but probably a majority on the next council, who will be there, you know, backing this up. So what I would like to do is make a substitute motion to, that would be the staff recommendation. So that would lower the AGA to 75% of CPI. That was the same that they recommended to RHC. Lower the floor to 1%, which is lower than they originally recommended to RHC. So we have a 1% floor, and then maintain the ceiling of 5%, which was supported by the RHC and was recommended by staff. I think, hopefully that would, you know, if my colleagues will support this, we can get more than four votes. We can send a message that we're committed to this to both our mobile home residents and HCD, that this will be something that we'll stick to over time. I would just add one more element to it, just for when this comes back to us. I don't know if it, originally it might have been on consent, but I do want to at least explore the fees in some way, shape, or form. So one option could be to, as Councilmember Cheryl Walter said, you know, allow some percentage to pass through. Another could be to just eat it out of the general fund, some percentage of it. I don't know what the right answer is tonight, because I don't think staff has looked at it. But I'll look to staff for guidance here. Like, is that something that you could bring back and that we could, you know, plug into the final ordinance update? Or is it something that you would prefer to come back with after that as part of some sort of program update? But I guess then we'd have to amend the ordinance again. But I want to, you know, make this not as, I want to make this as simple for staff as possible. I just want to make sure we address it in some way, shape, or form.
Could you re, I'm sorry.
Some staff be able to answer it, whomever would like to answer.
I'll make a comment and see if City Manager McCarthy has anything to add. It's something we could evaluate if that's council's direction. We have made a really concerted effort to try to keep the overall program budget as lean and effective as possible to be able to serve park owners and mobile home residents. And so if the notion is to be able to still support the overall program, part of the valuation, we think we need to include how the other costs can be backstopped and filled in. But I want to turn it over to City Manager McCarthy, if she has anything to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. So I would just say the biggest comment I would have is just the timing of more intricate evaluation of the fees. If council was inclined to do it in a simpler way, much like what Councilmember Ramirez suggested, if it is reduced to basically 53% for staff, the total cost is around $323,000. So essentially, what we would likely do in the most simple way is just have the general fund pay for like $150,000 of it. That's basically paying for half of this program. I would probably want to look at legal services and see if there's a way to reduce that. I think it would be very difficult to reduce the 15% that already goes towards the hearing officers. Maybe there's a little bit of swag in materials and supplies, but it's probably only a few thousand dollars. So it really wouldn't make that much difference. The overhead, that's typical. I mean, that is normal for a city to charge overhead. So I wouldn't reduce that. But I think it really just boils down to whether this council is okay with reducing the fee and then basically just having the general fund supplement half of it. And then I think we would want to look at if there's any way we can, like I said, shave legal, but otherwise, that to me is the fastest, cleanest way, because otherwise, it's probably going to take more staff time to evaluate it and then bring it back to you all later than March. Because right now, the plan would Because right now, the plan would be to bring this to you on March 13th and then for the second reading on the 25th, I believe, that's your, whatever your last Tuesday meeting in March is. So that would be my suggestion for the fees. So you can do it, but half would probably be general fund paid.
Okay. I think, so I think just to recap my substitute motion, it would be the, the staff recommendation. And then on the fees, based on what my colleagues feel, I would be comfortable with allowing up to 50% of that fee to be passed through if folks don't want that and they would prefer just to fund it out of the general fund. The $150,000 is the, roughly, as the city manager said, I'm open to that, too. I don't want to prescribe that for anyone. I know some folks will be uncomfortable passing that through. But, so I'll just, I'll just state that if folks want to, want to talk about amendments, we can, but my substitute motion is the staff recommendation. And then the, we would cover up to 50% of this annual fee cost in some way, shape, or form, whether it's the general fund. Staff, when they bring it back, can choose whether it's the general fund or some other funds. But that, that's my substitute motion. Hopefully someone will second it.
I second it. I have a question for the motion maker.
Yes.
How difficult is it for us to consider a 25% pass-through or something, something that's, just get the ball rolling? Because if we can't get it done then, we know where, that the fees are above the region, but like a 25% is something to get.
I totally agree with you. I think the intent is that this comes back on consent. And so we kind of have to decide tonight what that pass-through percentage is so that we have a fully baked ordinance and we aren't just, you know, making.
Well, that's why I was recommending.
So just to, just a point of order. So to clarify, this, per the housing element, the program needs to, we need to adopt and buy the 31st of March. So, and I, I see staff with their light on. So I just, there was a motion, there was a substitute motion by Councilmember Clark, and that was seconded by Councilmember McAllister. And we will fix the screen to adjust that. And then I will turn to staff for their comments.
Just to clarify, there is going to be a, a public hearing, which is the first reading. The consent item will be the second meeting in March, so there would still be discussion.
Oh, that's the intent. Okay. Well, then, you know, in that case, maybe when the ordinance comes back, you know, we have the option of either funding, you know, half the costs from the general fund or selecting a percentage that's allowed to pass through. And I, I'm not comfortable picking a percentage tonight. But that at least gives us a choice of do we just subsidize it ourselves? Because I want to make sure that we cover the, I want the program to be robust and to have good legal help and all those things. I'm not trying to shortchange that. I just think we just have to figure out where, how to make that up.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the substitute? Do you have a question?
Just a short.
Oh, okay. Vice Mayor Ramos.
Sorry, Councilmember Hicks, I hit that button first. So I am not going to support this motion. I think about, in, in the long history that we keep on referring to, we're, we're kind of here because a body voted three to two against staff recommendation. I don't, I, I don't want to essentially, we only choose to be unanimous when we're not standing with our residents, so I don't, I don't like that. And that, that came across much more harsh than I, I really meant it to be, so I'm really sorry about that. I also think that you made a comment about the, the way the appeals are done. So staff could correct me. It's been a while since I was on this board, but they could correct me. The RHC isn't the initial evaluator of it. It's the hearing officer. The hearing officer is supposed to be a relative expert on this. Then it goes to the RHC. And then there is another appeal process after that, but that's to the courts. I don't see how that is over a, like, it's not, I feel like that was a, a very safe process, a process that most jurisdictions actually undertake. There are things that was mentioned before about the fees. I'm, I, the reason why I had concern in my initial motion about lowering the fees, which I do actually think that the fees should be lowered for mobile home parks, it's, it's just unfortunate because the reason why they're so high is because of, we have six mobile home parks and about 1,000 residents, so that, that fee is just split behind less people or less units as opposed to rent, our rent stabilized units, which is at 14,000. It's easier to, to make that. I was thinking about how we, we do the, the fee reduction. I did like the city managers' idea, but if worse comes to worse, I am, we, we adopted our process for our council work plan, and we're each gonna get little, three little buckets where we could put in a work plan item. I dedicate to, one of my work plan items to looking at that fee. So that, but I, I can't accept, I cannot accept this motion. I don't plan on voting for it. We can go through another round of, of discussions after this, but I'm, I'm against this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Hicks.
So I could, you know, I could support a tweak to the original, the original motion, but this is a bit too much for me and particularly the, the, you know, the possibility, which I know is not, we haven't decided yet, but of passing through some of the fee to residents on top of, it's really, if we went with that, it would be even more than the staff recommendation. So it's a bit much for me at this point, so I will not be supporting it.
I think I, I'll ask the motion maker, would you be willing to amend your motion, your substitute motion to just being the staff recommendation?
I would, I would be fine. I guess we can, we can address the fee at another time down the road. So I, I do think we should address it, and that can be in the form of subsidizing from the general fund or maybe, 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 well, we can't actually do that because that's CSFRA and we can't amend that. So I, if that, I, I would be, I would be, I'll accept the amendment to just do the staff recommendation and not, and not mess with the fees right now.
Okay.
Councilmember, I wonder if I could ask Karen Tiedemann, who's on the line, who's legal counsel to the RHC, whether evaluating fee options could out, occur outside of the ordinance process?
Okay. I think if, great, someone I think is working to unmute you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. Yes, I was just looking at the MHRSO. So the MHRSO provides that the RHC will set the fee to fund its activities in implementing it, but it also allows them to accept funds from the city or any other source to cover the costs of implementing it. So that's already in the ordinance. So if there was a desire later to have the city fund some portion of the operating costs, I think that could happen, probably by resolution of the city council agreeing to do it and resolution of the RHC agreeing to accept the funds. If the desire is to pass through the fee to the mobile home park residents, that would require further amendment to the MHRSO.
Got it. So staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think basically what we can do is, I can just, my substitute motion can be the staff recommendation. And if we want to subsidize the fee, we can do that through the budget process. We would just address it when the budget comes to us. So I'm, I'm fine with that. If the secondor is okay with that. Yes.
Great. City Manager McCarthy?
Thank you. That's what I was going to say.
Okay. Wonderful. All right. So I will further clarify just where, where we are now. So the substitute motion is the staff recommendation of the 75% CPIU, the, lower the floor to 1% and maintain a ceiling of 5%. And given these, this tweak, I'm able to support, you know, I just couldn't support anything where things are passed through onto the residents. I just, I can't, I can't support that. So unless there's any other comments, we can call a vote? Oh, it went away so fast. So it looked like it failed. Oh, there we go. Okay, so it was only two to four. Is that, did John, did you not vote?
No, I didn't have a screen.
No, I mean, shall we, okay, we're gonna do our screens again. Did everyone vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that motion fails three to four. Looking for a new motion. Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. So that, just to clarify, the procedure is the underlying motion is now on the floor, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
So then a question for the maker of the motion.
But before, sorry, just before we go into the question, let's just reiterate what that underlying motion is, just for clarity purposes. And I got a nod from the city attorney, so that means that's a good thing, right? And that is 60% of the CPIU, 0% floor, 3% ceiling, and then I wrote here, RHC petition process. Is that still included? Okay. And I wrote $151 fee. Is that what your question's gonna be, Councilmember Ramirez? Okay. But is, was that included, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Ramos?
So I, I actually am okay, as long as it's not being passed through with what the city manager has mentioned. We will deal with that in the budget process. Right? That's, this is a question for the budget process.
Okay, I'm seeing a nodding head. So, all right, so that would be the fee reduction from, I think, what is it, 285? Is that right? 285 to 151. It would include the RH petition process. City Manager McCarthy, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. So I would just say maybe don't be as specific on the exact amounts right now because we would want to determine that through this process.
Okay.
But I would want to make, make it clear that nothing would be certain for the fees until July 1st, should council move to act. So I just want to make that clear. So nothing would change until the budget would be adopted.
Right. Okay. Understood. All right. So I think we have an understanding of what the, no. Do you have more?
Yes. So my, at the very least, I would like to provide some assurance. I'm, I'm not wedded to 151, but I would, I am wedded to a commitment to reducing the fee substantially. So maybe with some guidance from staff, how can we ensure that the direction that you have is to substantially reduce the fee?
I believe that we've heard interest in making sure that the fee just covers staffing, so I suspect what will happen is that it'll be cut in half.
In half, okay, I'm good with that.
And I also want to ask Housing Director Chen if it's gonna take more time for the petition process to be looked at and whether what's brought back in the ordinance is really just related to the 6003 and whether the petition process would need to be in another phase.
Just, I'll, I'll look to Ms. Anderson as well. I think it would need to be in another phase. It'd be helpful to better understand what particular barriers are and then what maybe are some options. And we may also look to other jurisdictions and see if there are best practices that we could glean, but that would, that would take longer than the housing element timeline.
Yeah, and just looking at section 46.10, it's a very general statement in the MHRSO and the Rental Housing Committee adopted detailed regulations to further the petition process. So if anything should be changed or streamlined, the, the regulations could be, the Rental Housing Committee should be able to take a look at that and streamline those regulations if so desired.
Sorry, I'm just, sorry, I'm just trying to clarify. It's, it sounds like that the petition process might be removed from the motion and that the RHC would be able to look, look into that? Is that, because we wouldn't meet the timeline if it was included in this motion? I'm just trying to clarify what staff is saying.
Maybe you can formally request the Rental Housing Committee to look at the petition process?
Okay. So the motion could include, sorry, sorry, Vice Mayor, just one second. Okay, so a substantial fee reduction and a direction for the RHC to look at the petition process regulations. That could be what's the motion. Okay, that's all right. Councilmember Ramirez, does that sound fine? Substantially reduce? Okay. All right. Councilmember Cheryl Walter.
Yeah, I have a question. It's my understanding that nobody has ever, I mean, well, in the mobile home ordinance, there hasn't been a petition yet, right?
There have no, been no park owner eminent white petitions.
Yes. So we don't really know that there's a problem with those petitions.
Correct. Um, yeah.
I, I just feel like we don't really know there's a problem with these petitions. And if it comes to the, you know, they put one together and it doesn't work, then we, they should look at it. But I think it's premature to ask for that. So I would prefer that we didn't ask them to evaluate this at this time. I, I just think it's unnecessarily, it just seems like it's an unnecessary job when nobody's tested the existing system. We don't have any reason to know that it's broken.
We've never been this slow.
What?
We haven't been this slow before, so there's no reason to test it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Do you have, are you?
Sure. I, I just wanted to assure any concerns, and that's why I wanted to look at the petition process. I didn't think it would be a big lift for the RHC. They, they meet every month and they have, I'm sure they have lots of work, but I, I feel like this is in their thing and it's a reasonable enough request.
Understood. Are you still fine seconding the motion?
I guess so.
Okay, so she's still gonna second the motion. Okay. So I think that if there's no other discussion, we can bring it forward for a vote. All right, and the motion passed for three. Thank you very much to staff. We'll move on to item eight, which is our council and staff committee reports. Do council members have any, or staff have committee reports? And this is for official city business in your capacity as a city council member. Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I will need to disclose that I participated in the Mayor's Innovation Project in DC. I think it was January 15th through 16th, is that right, Councilmember Clark? I was joined by Councilmember Clark and used public funding for that, that conference. And I found the, the material very useful. There was a series of discussions that included elements related to affordability and childcare came up quite frequently, and I was very impressed with what other jurisdictions across the country were, were doing at municipalities specifically. And then Councilmember Cheryl Walter, I wish you could have been there for the, the section about flooding. Really fascinating work done in some other jurisdictions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Clark.
As Councilmember Ramirez said, I also attended the Mayor's Innovation Project. I won't repeat what you said, but we also, one other really great thing was that we, we had an entire hour. was that we had an entire hour with now former Secretary of Transportation Buttigieg, which even though he was on his way out, provided a lot of really valuable feedback around grants that had already been, that are already in process and maybe already appropriated, and just navigating that whole bureaucracy.
Thank you. Councilmember Showalter.
I attended my first Basque meeting, and it was just the night after our ceremonial meeting. And I'm glad to report that the SFPUC reservoirs are in good shape. So they are at a level of fullness that the SFPUC feels like that we're, you know, we're in good shape for our water needs. Now, granted, that was just the reading at the beginning of January. We're supposed to get more snow and precipitation later in the year to fill it up a little more. And it's been an awfully dry January. But anyway, things were looking good, from our point of view. So I know in Southern California, that's not the case at all. And then the other thing that we worked on was the work plan. The staff had come back with a very comprehensive list of jobs that they're going to undertake. So there really wasn't very much discussion of it. But I'm glad to report that the, our contract amendment is finishing that up is an important part of the work plan. So I'm going to enjoy working on this. It's reminding me of many things I used to know.
Councilmember McAllister.
Well, I didn't have the ability to go out of state, but I did go to the California League of Cities, new council members and mayors. And it was good to get back in the saddle again, you might say. I had the privilege of having Christine Gilmore alongside to help guide me through some of the processes. We met our California lobbyist, which was a good opportunity to hear what was going on, and that was very helpful. So I met other council members that they're still there. So it was making contacts, as you all say, is very important. Now, I'm not sure if we're allowed to talk this, but there was a lot of burglaries going on in Mountain View a couple of weeks ago. And I was able to convene a neighborhood meeting with the police department. There was the chief there and three others, and I'd like to thank him there. We had over 125 people there. It was the largest turnout that the chief has seen, that's the largest turnout that I have seen, that there was a great interest about it. And after that meeting, the two days later, you may have heard that they caught the perpetrators and a lot of money there. And last night, this is a full, and I ran into Jeff Rosen, and I said, "What are you guys going to do to him?" And he says, "These guys did enough that they may get life." So it was a coordinated effort between many cities, but the city of Mountain View got hammered. And the police department were there to reassure everybody. Again, just indicates the quality and dedication that the Mountain View Police Department has.
Great. Thank you very.
Am I allowed to say that?
Well, you already said it. But yes, thank you. And my understanding is that they're going to be looking at it as a hate crime, because it was targeted towards a certain demographic of our community. And so I just wanted to report, I attended the Cities Association, as well as the Council of San Mateo Cities. And the Cities Association had their Peninsula Legislators address. There was six state legislators, or Assembly members there, talking about Sacramento, the bills that they're going to be, they think they'll be authoring. So it was a really great opportunity, and I think some of my fellow colleagues were there as well. Any other announcements? I guess committee reports. So Councilmember Clark?
All right. I should, because there was a registration fee. I did attend that as well. I'd forgotten, and I think the Vice Mayor did, but I'll let her say that.
Okay. Yes, three of us attended. So we'll move on to Item 9, which is our adjournment. But before we do that, just another plug for our Lunar New Year event this Saturday at our community center, 10 to 2. The next city council meeting will be held on February 11th. This meeting is adjourned at 9:36 PM. Thank you. Have a great night.